Okay, it's being 7:32. I'm gonna open the meeting tonight and permit information is being recorded. Okay. We have some commitments, all the commitments are obtained where. Yes, Spears and Hope we do community planning commission will vote to accept the minutes dated January 23rd, 24th. Second, any further discussions, questions, or objections during now, favorably say aye.
Aye.
That's all. Thanks Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, good afternoon.
Yeah. Um. Okay, um, I want. We have a book here at eight o'clock, so I'm gonna be taking a book here, so I'm gonna see what a couple of desires things first. Danielle, 210 Main Street, you don't have any questions on 210 Main Street, do you? Okay. We just wanna change the facade of the building.
Yep.
So, not sure why that came to us.
I think because I had been saying for a time with you, but if it's not something that you'd like to review for approval.
Uh, I think we should comment on it, but I don't know if it's a vote necessary, so, but I just was wondering why if I came to us, other than we do have those districts that we've been years ago, put on Main Street, four separate districts. Um. And an attempt to keep the town, you know, keeps the character of the town such as it is, not sure that that don't, you wanna make any comments on why you're doing that?
We're trying to turn it into what we are. So, we have Royal Air Systems, so we have our logo as the castle, and so we have to take down the awning. There was a windstorm that decided our awning was coming down.
Yeah.
So, it's coming down, and so when we were starting with that, the suggestion was made, and it just kinda, we all liked the idea, it's using vinyl siding, which is, it looks like field stone for lack of a better word.
Right, right.
And then on the top, which has always been raised, that's part of our roof structure, they're just gonna make, they call it forelations along the top edge. Other than that, that's really, we're gonna change the lighting, we're taking the awning down, we're in process on getting, working with someone to make a new sign.
Yeah.
Um, and that I'm sure is a different permit, back to the back, we're still working on trying to find someone to make us a sign.
Okay, so we, uh, when we do a site plan review, which we obviously did on that site, um, and what's there now, which resulted that site plan review, generally try to keep everything in character in the neighborhood. And I'm not sure that this fits, this is kind of disreaching now, within the character of the surrounding buildings of the neighborhood. May I ask the rest of the board for any comments on this? On what they might interest us. Jeremiah, I'm gonna start, what do you, you look at this 210 Main Street?
Yeah, I took a look at the images. Um. I, I generally don't have an opinion, I don't think that, uh, the change is, looks bad necessarily, so I can't, I can't say that it would be, you know, strike that different with the surroundings, in my opinion at least, so I had no issue with it.
Right.
If all of them, if comes here for. Well, I'll circle. Is it, Danielle, is it possible for the public to show what the image that we're all discussing?
Uh, yes.
We have this discussion today, poor Danielle is like, doing Zoom, what's the date?
I wanna do that without mapping up anything with the.
I just thought it might be helpful for the public, because we're having, there's quite a few people on Zoom and.
Right, I was just wondering if I should pull up a copy of it and take a look, um. Let me see, one moment.
While they look that up, yeah, if you'll run. Actually, that mentor, she a mile.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna look at my.
Yeah.
This is.
So, again, we've always tried a few, but I always think, you know, it's about.
Um, and I think to Jeremiah's point, I'm not sure, you know, what, you know, what say we have in that, but I'll just say, as a, as a member here, you know, one of, one of my, my goals, and I'll back up. One of the things I hear the most from probably every single person I ever talked to in town, when they hear them on CPC, is when are you gonna make Main Street look better? Um, so, it, it, it's not like something you can just wave a wand and do, we all know that, and it costs money, and it takes time too, right, it's a turnover of tenants and owners and things like that, but, um, you know, I think to Warren's point, if we're even just starting like with baby steps, it's like just to have it look a little bit more, you know, in keeping with the neighborhood, and I don't know if that's more clapboard, or, you know, what's the style, but I'm not sure I get, I'm not sure I get the whole stone thing, just the way it's shown now, when you mentioned like a new awning, or downlights, you know, to the sign, and you could completely transform it, and make it look really good, but I'm just going by the photo I'm seeing, so I'm trying to be fair.
It will be mine, the photo that you.
I'm sorry, could you please say your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Kate Mahoney.
Good.
Thanks, Kate.
I work with Royal Air Systems.
Okay.
So, the awning that is there now, if you scroll that up, um, has been there for well over 20 years, please don't ask me how long I don't, I'll just say over 20 years.
Yeah.
Um, and it is tired, and it's showing its age.
Yeah.
We had a windstorm about three months ago, where a stick came right through it. Um, and God, no one was hurt, it was no problem, but it did pierce the vinyl of the awning, so we agreed we were gonna have to bring that down. At that point, we started looking at the shape the building was in, under the awning is not in great shape, it's been up for 20 years, so we're gonna have to change the front of the building, because it's just, it's, it's just not good enough, you know, what's there is a, I don't know what you call it, a shingle block. That's under the awning, down, above the awning, you know, where the awning is and up, it's just like plywood. Uh, so, we have to do something, and so the comment was made to this, and the building itself is gray. I know the building in the pictures that you have, that they're older, it's white than those photos, we had it repainted.
Right.
Year and a half, two years ago, you know, so we're gonna switch into another field stone.
Okay.
And that's just my comment, by the way, like, I'm not sure how much we don't have necessarily, and Danielle can speak to this, aesthetic zoning overlay really right now on Main Street.
Well, that's the, what's called a low junction one, is that the, the, you know, overlay that covers that part of Main Street?
The best one, I'm not, I'm not sure.
We have those four, it's a long time ago, so we didn't make a mandatory, we didn't have a, as a suggestion.
Yeah, just doing our.
Well, people doing work in that area could look at some, um, some, get some direction about what we would like to see. So, we have, we have an area that has a particular look up, they all fit together, and then another area that all fits together, another area, and then attempt to put, to do exactly that, to give some kind of continuity, some kind of look from Main Street, that was the intention, we didn't make a mandatory. Um, but somebody wanted to stay within, within the confines of what we had originally with that, they had something to go by. So, instructions, which are how things, what we would like to see there, so. So, this is a little bit of a, a little bit of a great departure from what's there, so, that's why, I think that's why we're hearing it here. Also, again, the original site plan did not have recented, so. They had white, I would imagine, but they had, but after that.
Well, it was white for many years, so we switched it to red.
Yep.
Um.
Yep. Was it Danielle, was that?
Yeah.
So, are you okay with it?
You're.
Um. You know, you want to.
The sort of, I know that like we're sensitive to Main Street.
Yeah.
We have to be sensitive to Main Street, we have to be sensitive to a lot of things.
Right.
Um. I mean, I, I probably would. I'm looking at the two photos, and, and, I mean, has, has the board actually discussed like platforms of like what the future will look like, or what we're really trying to mold?
Oh, that was kind of the idea of those four overlays, four districts that we, that we originally put out there. And again, you know, you have to keep in mind that when you, when you do something like this, that somewhat of a departure from the surrounding properties, um, you then open the door for something to come in with all purple, you know, and, and, you know, and while that maybe in some cases, okay, it may not be what you wanna see on Main Street, so.
Right, and then as a counterargument, I mean, we have, you know, firestone, we have, you know, McDonald's, and other things that are, to me, it's just me, aren't that attractive at all? So, I'm not sitting here in judgment, I hope you know that, I was just, the biggest complaint I get is, why do you go to choose something about Main Street? And personally for me, that is one of my goals this year with the commission, is to try to come up with something. So, if you were to call Danielle in the future and say, you know, what's, what are kind of the, what's, what do you, what is the plan for Main Street, and we could give you some sense of the aesthetics and the materials that we're looking to see, and a precedent of things, just like if you were to go through a certain section of downtown Reading or something, you'd see all those buildings kind of close to the street, it kind of, that shop look, um, that's what a lot of people say, what, you know, can you make it like Andover, why can't we be like this? And it just, it's one step at a time, but we don't have anything, to your point, that would tell you, you need to do this, so you're just getting comments right now.
Well, the aesthetic next, across the street is brick, next door to us is the Jill shop, I believe that's just gray and, and pink, I think.
Big bricks.
Gray and pink, I don't, I don't really, I don't, I haven't moved that close to it. And then next door, there's the Green Area's office that has wood, and they also have a stone siding along their bottom edge, because we walked over to be polite and ask about the location.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, so I'm not, again, you know, you're here in front of us, people asking for comments, I'm just commenting, but I don't, there's no any dialogue that I have in front of me, it's, I can tell you, no, no, so that's all.
Actually, I think that's a good question, um, I thought when I first saw it in Birmingham, there was a different facade, and it was a castle.
Forelations, yeah.
Yeah, is that not being considered?
That is being considered, I don't know what picture you sent, that is, that's weird here, as the, as the business owners, but this is being a.
So, it's not the wall we're looking at?
So, that's not the picture that I just laid?
I don't, I don't.
Let me try to get the right one.
The picture that we, that we saw, it has a small forelation on the top edge, which I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, that's the, I can't.
The program marks.
Which is, we're gonna do this, it's just straight on the castle top, yeah, just on the castle edge, which is what we're looking to do on the top edge, then we're gonna change the sign, so right now it shows no sign on the picture you showed.
Right.
There will be a sign, we are working with this, just starting finding a sign company that does that kind of thing, and we're working with them. Um, I know that there's rules to vote, we can have for a sign, and so we're just, first step is to get the awning down, the next step is to measure this, they will have available, you know, it's pages.
Um, I, I would like to display it, but I'm actually having trouble figuring out how to do that, but in permit eyes, that actually the image is not the same one that we were sent for this application, so, um, I, if I can just share, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're seeing.
So, and, and finally, it looks a bit like a prison wall.
Okay.
And that's, so that's the.
It's like a prison wall.
And, and a box.
Well, the building, I mean, the building is a box, that's what I, that's what I have, that's what I have.
And, and that's why, that's what you work with, I mean, and that's why they, before the awning, I think the, the building was, it was very attractive.
That's actually the image, the, the castle, that was what we got, the building permit, but that is the. That's why I just wanted to.
Well, that helps a little, because.
Oh, is it?
So, the sign that, if it's the same picture I think that she got, the sign that's on it, they just took it off our website, slapped it on, and showed you there won't be a sign.
Oh.
We know that there'll be.
It was because we got in our, in our package here.
It doesn't kind of, that's why I was like a castle.
It's a box, black box, black guy.
Yeah, so that's not, that's not like our.
That's just what came in.
So, again, the signs, we don't have.
That's what they should be on, yeah.
We don't have the sign yet, so they just put a sign up, and I know that there are different rules for lighting the sign, and I think that's not my department.
Yeah, okay.
She's, she's showing, I think, the right picture, I saw the sign.
Yeah, I think so, I'm making it for the, for the. Sorry, thank you, thank you, everyone, I'm gonna let you know also if you want, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what the problem is.
We can do this. Until we get.
I don't, I don't.
Um, so one, certainly number one, one I wanna do this.
So, keep it, that whole thing in, keep it all thing in perspective, if that one, you know. You okay with it? Yeah, you'd rather see something a little bit like that on days?
I, I'm just, keep following back on, I'm not sure what jurisdiction we have over aesthetic right now, when I read highway business zoning, I don't see anything in it.
Well, generally, when somebody comes to upgrade a building, they, they very, they don't change completely the, the, the texture of the side of the building, so there's a color change or a style change, or something like that, so. But that's a little more than normal, so.
It was only because there had previously been a site plan review, so, the CPC reviewed it originally, it just had a very different look, and that is the only reason I wanted to see it.
And Danielle, in the site plan review, say whether original or revised due to some changes here, the only reference to aesthetic is basically in keeping with the surrounding, right, it's, it's not vague, I'm saying, but it's not exactly that specific.
It's, you know, approval of the aesthetic, it's more of a, um, it's an approval of the site, and it's as shown in the plan.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So, when there.
I thought there was a surrounding argument there.
There is something like that, but the actual approval, it's just the approval of the building as it was shown in the elevations and the original approval, and so when there's a minor change, it's, you know, they just do it, but if there could be a substantial one, so, I just wanted to show it to you in case, um, we've got substantial adaptive, we need to be.
And normally, normally, when we do a site plan review, we do ask for, for, uh, the lease, or, you know, pictures of what it's gonna look like, you know, and to see. And we ask what time, what, what material of the siding, we ask that question all the time, so all those, all those things were asked, and, and, um, and so what we did before is what we ended up saying, so this is, you know, as I said, a change, somewhat of a radical change on the original approval. So, you're okay with it? No.
It's just.
So, so, so the issue here is, um, nobody, it is a little, it is a little extreme, um, from what, what we did before to what you wanna do. Um, and we're just, and they're not sure about, you know, whether or not they want, I don't think it requires another cycle interview, although the original was part of the cycle interview, again, they asked for all those questions, then, so, um. Um, and I don't think this is something we would be voting on anyway, I don't think you're looking for a vote on this, right?
I'm only, uh, any feedback on whether you believe you need to actually review it for a new approval, whether a minor modification or a new site plan review, if the answer to that is no, then no, you don't need to do anything, I just wanted to see if you felt that it was a substantial enough change to warrant any further review.
Well, it is, it is a bit of a, it is a bit of a change, it was more than, more than just a little change there, and, and, um, and, um, um, and the whole town will be looking at to say, you know, who, you know, how did this happen? So, um. So, do you want to, do the, do the rest of us just look, permit, the front high, the chair for them?
Probably does, right?
Yeah, I, I.
Kate, is that what the permit does in the, the high roof, does it cover mechanical equipment in the rooftop units?
There's a unit on the, yes, so, yeah. It also gave us the height, well, there was originally a beanbag. Furniture store there, it gave them the height for the awning.
Right.
And then when we moved in, we took down this awning, because we didn't do furniture to put a box.
Yeah.
Pretty typical, you know, retail facade, right, you know, park it up, so, you know, more sign area.
Um. What's that?
I mean, you wanna, wanna just as a courtesy, just go out there and look, see, you can see, this is, I mean, this is not built yet, but I mean, just to see that area.
You want to walk, walk back and forth in front of that, you have to take a look at what, what you're trying to match up to, that probably.
Because if I see a lot of stone and everything, then, you know, it is, it is.
Um.
Similar. Do you have a, a, a sample as well, not with you today, but you, can you, you get a sample of that vinyl?
I don't have, I don't have a sample, look at the material that we did in.
Yeah, because Danielle, I'd be happy to just go out there, you know, if anyone else wanted to meet, just walk around the area, just see what the sample looks like, and that. Give the, give the board the feedback.
Okay, well, the, uh, building's not falling down, so if we, if we take.
Yeah, I'll do it right away.
You know, it's not, it's not fine, Tim, we have a problem with the awning, and we have attached it.
Right.
As best we.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing washed, it's all hung together, so when we go in to look up, it's not free.
I think we'd like to go out and take.
They found it in Walmart down Main Street, that windstorm. It's now in another building.
So, I, I think we, we'd like to take a, a look at the surround, show what, how we think it would fit in, because, um.
If you would like a sample, I'd like a week to get.
Oh, yeah, yeah, take your time, yeah.
Yeah, a week, a week, so the next, so, it would probably, um, it is kind of a great departure, if you might wanna, if you have any second choices, you might wanna look at though, if we think.
There's one, I'm not.
Fine.
As in, what else should I consider, I actually like the stone, I just, it seems like it's an awful lot of it.
Yep.
And I wonder if there's a, like a happy medium, and you can incorporate some of the stone as more of a, you know, foundation layer at the bottom, and then transition to a more traditional clapboard.
Yeah.
Uh, I think the, the sign will help raise it up for this aesthetic, so like the one we're looking at.
And it's just a paste on, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know, like, if it was, if we had a sign on there to scale, I think that would give a good representation of just how much, because right now, my, my comment on the permit was, because you have guessing eight feet above the windows, it's just a bunch of the stone now, right, and just, it looks disproportionate, um, I also think the windows, just having no window treatment, I'm not sure like shutters are appropriate on the building, but it just seems like very stark, right? It's gonna, and that's the nature of renderings, they always kind of come out like this, don't provide you a very lifelike image. Um, but yeah, that would be my general comment, and again, I get the castle things, all right, so you might say, it doesn't do me any good to do the stone, not doing it throughout, because you like, you like the castle image, um, but.
You could, you could, I, I really like your idea of going far away with the stone, and then go up.
Kind of defeats the whole purpose of it.
Well, that's a good one, because you could put, um, you know, could put dental on top, you know, put the square up.
The dental molding?
Yeah, on the top, and give it that same look.
Is this someone, the, the vet has stone on the bottom, but clapboard above, above the stage?
I don't know what's above, I know this stone.
Two across the street.
Yeah.
That just has.
Yeah, that's brand new, they have a, they have a brick, and they clapboard above, right? I choose those.
Yeah. Okay, you might take a look at that, so what we'll do is, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna put it on the next meeting, and, um, we'll all, we'll take a look, and then we'll have you come back, and we'll, and see what you've come up with, and what we've come up with. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next meeting is March.
Next meeting is March, and, you know. Yeah, but it's not for a while, we'll be done, so we'll try to be careful right up front, so you don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Greenbrier, let's talk about that, here you go.
Um.
I'm gonna do, I brought your colors too.
Yeah.
That's right, we, we printed them off, please, I don't know if we're gonna use them, leave them on, right, there. You know, it's the.
Yeah. Well, basically, what you've done, what you do since the last time, is you put in the location of the doors and the window, and those things there, so, um.
That's all they do, just do the candles, so now we're going to paint, they can pick on the color of all. With this reason.
That's good, I appreciate that, I'm just a little weary of the.
I know.
The thing, you know, because then I can't really represent to the town what it's gonna look like, if it's just, we're gonna hand paint. If it's an actual sample here from a manufacturer, I can say it's gonna be this kind of blue, green, that's all, I'd feel better about it.
I agree.
Yeah.
No, I rather it be, because I just wanna put it on your apps and say, hey, what would you like, you know what I'm saying, and then I turned around saying, oh, we wanna see what you're gonna do, so they went back, they kind of went backwards, you know.
Who, who, who is regulating, you know, when this building goes in, you have the building department handling building code. Yeah.
But you have a DEP element to it, right, is there some sort of certification, at least trying to understand.
Did I change in the, um, the treatment plant, it's just basically doing, putting building around.
I guess what I'm, and you, you're more knowledgeable than I in this area, so it's a treatment plant right now, open and aerobic, so, for, so whatever smell on the prevailing wind, they're catching it right now, and for the public, we're talking about the Greenbrier states, there's a, um, you know, a waste facility that's just inside off of 28, behind the.
Who's breaking through the street?
Yeah, well, you can't see it actually from, you'll see, it does blend, you'll see the building, you don't realize, the building will pop up, right, but I guess where, where I'm just just concerned, but I just want people smarter than me in that area, when you cover it all up, and I notice where you have some louvers and stuff, will the smell be more concentrated now that you're, you know, you're putting a lid on it, and it's coming out of just one event, or something like that, to the point where.
It'll be exhausting for the room.
Okay.
And it'll be better, because it'll be shot up through.
Okay.
The ground. You do gotta have electrical and everybody else.
There's so many.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm not, we don't get involved, we don't, we're not Jerry, we're not the building department, so we're really, in this case, really aesthetics, again, you know, to a change of use or whatever, but it was also just, you know, Jerry doesn't have anything to do with emissions, if you will, or new lines.
There's certain recitements of changing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to have somebody, you know.
For that type of facility, okay, so that's, that building code, or is that a mass DEP, like? Yeah, okay, that's what I figure, and I don't, that's all it's getting at, is I don't think Jerry does, Jerry has nothing to do with the DEP part of it.
Right.
Which is a bunch of the, the smell part, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be operating the plant so that it's not a nuisance to the public around it.
My inclination is I'm Jerry to go the lightest color we could, just to keep the heat down in the summertime.
It's kind of sandstone.
The tan, the tan looks fine, I mean.
It's like sand, white sandstone out front, in front of the building, there's some brick buildings, uh, that have a very, a very white, I think that's the color I call it, sandstone.
Yeah, the stone gray, and the, 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 the color, and, and tan, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the tan, or the, I mean, the, the stone gray, and the bone lights, and all those, they, they look like they blend in, but when the sun hits them, they actually light up, um, you know, when you.
Right up.
Well, white ones.
I don't like the yellow ones, I'm just kidding.
They get a bit, so they all cerule beige, tan, better.
Yeah.
Probably, you were staying just with like a 22 gauge then?
Right.
Select the ones.
So, do you like your sandstone? That tone down, and on, through on.
Yeah, this. That's kind of what we're looking at, you have to mark up.
You'll see what's on.
That, you know, yeah. That's more tan, than you wanted to.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I mean, it looks fine, my question is, I, I would question, so, that one, the wall is there now, that white very sixties. Very sixties, we have, that is.
I actually wanna do away with it, and use the building as a, a sign for the, the, you know. Use the side of the building as a sign for Greenbrier. You will better let, you know, a better rendering of something.
Right.
And get rid of that, but I, you know, it's like.
So, so, my question was.
That, that's not.
Are you one for that? Um, I don't know, I guess, let's see what we get, like, I just think that the way you're rendering is great, it's kind of blocked in there, you just see the roof kind of pop up, it's covering down the system. And you have this great. Wall vegetation, and yeah, could the sign be updated over time? Of course, but you have all this vegetation and trees there, I think that's good. I wouldn't want to take all that down.
Then you just, like, you had a big, a big industrial building.
Five, yeah, so, so, I don't know, my question was, um, is this the photo that you sent us, is that like a to-scale photo, so, okay.
It looks about right, too.
Yeah, that, that, I just, because, yeah. Yeah, my, my fear was that, when, I just didn't want it to.
I know.
You know what I mean, and.
Yeah.
And I know you're doing a great thing covering that up, the sore plant, and I just, I do like the way that this photo is presented. If that's to scale.
Put that in there, and I go, he goes, no, this is to scale, this is exactly what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, and I do like the, I do like all that full-size greenery there, I think that's great, I actually like this. Um, and as far as the color, they can.
Yeah, I, I don't get it, I'm playing over it, but I do like this, if this is to scale.
And it doesn't look too overwhelming, um, because I did go back out to the site, uh, a few days ago, just to take a peek again. And that was my main concern, is when you look at it, you just don't want something popping up. On, on Main Street, that just is being a blank kind of looking building, so, yeah, I like it, I really like it.
I don't care.
Right, what do you think, do you think that, like, the cerule beige, it'll go darker, a little bit than.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, stone gray, tan, I think we're all the same ballpark.
Yeah, it'd be like either, you're right.
I think that's a very thing.
I'm, I'm good with tan, cerule beige would be my two, I don't know, there's a awesome difference, you know, I get how sometimes it's the premium one, whatever. But, yeah. Of course, to try and pick our color. Qualulate and sync.
Pimp my sewer plant, you know what I mean? Love it.
Any color that's got red, it's all.
What we're all set?
Oh, yeah, I, I would say, uh, yeah, I'd say, thanks to the cerule beige, or the sand, or the, um. Stone, or the other one.
Yeah. Last year, last year, no, excuse me.
Dan, well, the only two that are kind of similar, tan or cerule beige, I think.
Yeah, the cerule.
A little bit.
Every one they have, it's.
You're right, whatever, we can drive by, it'll be the same.
All right, but you'll be on the.
The same thing, right? The roof's the same color, it's just all one.
I was gonna get the, um, peritoneal, uh, architectural shingles. Look, uh, you know, wood blend. Tan.
Yeah, I mean, that is what's on there now, that's gonna be metal roof, sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Um, yeah, I don't have a huge problem with that.
I, the only reason why I was doing the shingles was to make it blend with the surrounding area, so it looks like the soil. All right.
Yeah, if you just use the same shingles, like, to the left is a different shingle.
Now, now you go to ten mill.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the shingles to the left of the building, the building to the left, that is.
It'll let quiet, it'll let rain, too.
They beat that.
They just match.
Still the sewer.
Yeah, match the shingles, just. So they go with all the other buildings.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I get it.
Jeremiah, you have any comments on this?
Uh, no, I mean, I think you guys have it. Uh, the images in the, the share file, I think, look, uh, good to me, and it's definitely an improvement, so, nothing more than that.
All right, we're back. All right, I guess that's what you need to go, Mr. Ross said.
Yeah, cerule beige or tan?
Take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see here. Okay, it's being, uh, let's see. Being that's eight o'clock, I'm gonna go. Um, I'm gonna do seven Charles and two forty-nine Gable Street.
One, the, 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 the. You should be able to do that once.
Good evening, Julian here, we have go back, go, go, go round.
I know, I do know his name.
So before you start, I just wanna make it, uh, really clear that. What we're working on right now is basically determining, deciding on suitability of the site for open space residential development, so that's what we're, that's, we're not looking at. At the design of the, of, of it, or other than, uh, just an idea, somewhat of an idea of what might happen. There, there could be changes, we've done some research on, with, with towns, with the town council, and a few other. Um, uh, things, so, that, that we're still working on. So, um, we're, we're gonna get an update from, uh, these people right now, and, um. And we'll take questions relating only to that, to that, uh, the suitability of it, that open space residential development, so. Um, if you will.
Sure, so we were here, um, last month, and we did review the entire project, and I'm sure you saw during the, the, the. Um, you know, the recording of the meeting.
I did.
Uh, based on some of the comments we received from the board, based on comments received with the, the butters during that meeting, and then we did actually have a meeting with the, um, Seven Charles Street of Butters. And I did, um, have a conversation with Jim DiGiulio. Um, who's new council for, um, Mr. Romeo, and, um, I did review some comments that we received from some neighbors. Um, one person being, or somebody who lives on April Street, and then another person lives on Linder Street, and now address all of those issues, once I just get back into. Well, we did do some updates to the plan, one of the couple of things that were asked was, we had to fix the property line, if you remember, between. Two forty-nine, two forty-seven, so that property that runs along, um, the cul-de-sac, and we did, we changed that line. In addition to that, we added some buffer areas, so, on that portion of the street that runs along two forty-seven, um, April Street. We actually put in a row of trees to provide screening, because that's where the road goes, and we don't have any construction of any homes. On the other side, so we figured that we should really kind of supplement the, uh, buffer to those, that resident, the existing residential home, so that's what we had done. Um, a couple of the other changes that were made is based on my conversation with, um, Mr. Romeo's attorney, Jim DiGiulio, I believe you have a. A letter, it doesn't reference our conversations, but basically, he continues to aver that we don't meet the eligibility, applicability, and I can get into that if you want. But, long and short of it is, the board has the right to approve any, uh, any O S R D, anywhere in the R D district. You do.
Just a quick, well, just a quick point to, uh, we did, uh, talk to town council a little bit about that, and they, they'll get us a letter on, but they seem to feel that. That it's, uh, that it can be all handled as a single subdivision, so. We are, we do, we do have that from town council.
And I, but I.
I just take that off the table, so you don't have to get.
Thank you, so, but, but more importantly, you know, we still wanted to address Mr. Romeo's concerns, because he is in the butter, just like we wanted to address the concerns of the Charles Street residents and. Um, the other April Street residents, so. One of the issues in his concern was that we were putting, remember how we had changed, we had five parking spaces, using Amber Road, then we, we'd allow people to use Amber to park there. Well, his concern was, look, who's gonna maintain Amber Road, you're gonna maintain, wow, I can, I said, look, it's not just a developer at this point, it's residents, so no, we're not going to maintain Amber Road, because we don't use it. So, instead of having kind of that debate, who's going to, you know, upkeep that road, is it going to be the town, who? And, you know, are we going to allow, you know, people to access it for public purposes, that Mr. Romeo has to maintain, instead of facing that issue, we removed it. So what we had done is we placed the five parking spaces at the cul-de-sac for Lucas Lane, so I think you can see it. It's, it's, it's easy to access, people can pull in, people have identification for public parking, we'll still have a trail. Right end there, so that people can access it readily, and we will sign those particular parking spaces. But what we've done is eliminate the concern from Mr. Romeo, that people are going to continue to use this property. We originally put those five parking spaces there, because, as you know, the public still uses Amber to park, and they just park in front, wherever they want, on the existing portion of the way. So now we've at least, you know, changed where that public space is, and, oh, they think, oh, that was joined, and, oh my God, even that, he's our banner, white. Um, so then a couple of the other questions that were raised by the board members, and, look, we really want to see a sidewalk, while Mr. Pierce's point that we aren't designing this, it is a use permit, we still wanted to demonstrate that. We will be putting in sidewalks, because I think it's important for the board to know, so we show a sidewalk on the northern portion of Lucas Lane. As well as, we do show a portion of a sidewalk that will be used by that multifamily development, that, and we. That, on lot fourteen. You can see that, oh, you're good, okay, that'd be good. Um, so, those are the changes that we made, in addition, we put in a buffer of trees behind that multifamily, um, property. We're gonna provide a distance between the open space and a residential, a portion of this particular property. Um, so that really kind of sums up all the changes that we made in this section of, of the subdivision, now, Brendan, you wanna go to the other one, so we'll go to Abigail.
Can we ask a question on that?
So, uh, are we gonna?
Yeah, you go on.
Okay, so, when we met with the.
Please, there was a question.
So when we met with the people from, um. Charles Street, when we had a meeting on Saturday, we actually had a sidewalk with them, um, we discussed the person who currently lives at Bi Charles. They would like to be able to access their property off of the new subdivision roadway, so we basically told them, yeah, look, get together your plans, tell us where you want to have access. And we'll show, um, an access way, so that they can get from their property to, um, Abigail there. And we did also meet with the other abutter, who's, you know, so basically, the most proximate of butters were Bi Charles and Nine Charles. Um, we did meet with him as well, and, you know, just kind of chatted about how we're going to prepare the development, and the fact that we have a. Fairly large buffer along that strip of land where his property is, kind of faces the subdivision, even off of Charles, he still faces this, instead of the Charles, um, instead of facing Charles Street. Um. And then the only change that we made up here was actually to separate the two driveways that access lots six and five, and the reason we did that is because the rules required a thirty-foot separation between driveways, so we just wanted to show you the. Um, but as Mr. Pierce again said, this is more, if you will, a use permit, so we're seeking to get special permits to be allowed to develop this as an O S R D for twenty-six units. Um, we went over the waivers, um, which are complete, I know there's some concern relative to traffic being an issue, and that there not being safe site conditions. And we have contracted with a, a traffic engineer who will actually inform you once we have subdivision approval, but we did do site distance analysis for both entrances, because Amber. The entrance that would have been Amber Way is, does have site distance issues, but now where we've located Lucas, it does not, we actually provide a safe site distance. Um, for prop, for, um, cars exiting and entering the property. So that really sums up the questions and the changes that we made, um, and the comments that we received, again, for Mr. Romeo, were really related to whether it's applicable in depth, that we're not going to discuss. But some of the other issues raised by the two abutters, not abutters, the residents, one isn't abutter, um, relative to the project for safety and traffic, and again, that's going to be done and handled. With our first consultant, and then by your reviewing engineer, um, and then there was some concern about the Title V septic system. The septic system will be completely Title V compliant and Board of Health compliant, it'll be located more than eight hundred feet from the nearest residence, and it is located. More than a hundred feet from any wet one, because there was some concern about that, because it's a shared system. Um, and then relative to stormwater, we have yet to complete that, obviously, we wouldn't until we know what the subdivision is going to look like. But we did show the locations of certain of the stormwater, because one of the big issues for the, um, Charles Street residents, because of that development that's located at the. Back part of Charles, they wanted to see how much of our watershed was gonna be still draining into Charles Street, and basically, you know, there's a very small portion of that new. Street, the new Abigail, that even drains into the basin that's been provided, for the most part, the entire site goes toward the back and toward the weather, naturally, eventually go. That kind of sums up everything in a nutshell, and if you have questions, or if you want us to take questions for the public, we'd love to entertain, thank you.
On the board, uh, did anybody have any questions, Jeremiah?
Uh, no, I, uh, I think it's a really positive development, and it looks great.
Okay, right.
Uh, here's. Quickly, I want to cover the moment, would be the, the buffer. To the south of Lucas there, um, the, the landscape buffer you created there.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I don't, I don't see the abutters home on that, on that, but it just.
We actually have it on.
It's gonna extend to the cul-de-sac. It doesn't extend to the cul-de-sac, it looks like it had at the cul-de-sac.
It does end at the cul-de-sac, but we could extend it, can you just show, I mean, if, if the abutter would like it to be, we absolutely can.
Okay, sorry, just make sense.
Yeah, I think his home is, oops, we just saw it, I think, a minute ago.
No, I don't, everyone's, that was just.
It's on the, uh, or, I thought it was on one of the plans, like, the originals, we could show you, I don't think that helps with extending that around the cul-de-sac. It, it really is intended to try and provide them with privacy from the road, because you don't have, usually, a little hole on that side, so you have that kind of walking from the street, so that's our intent.
Sure, and the, and the sidewalk is, sorry, it's small plan, it goes all the way up the left side of Lucas.
Yes, all the way to the left side.
The left side of the sheer drive, and then up front of the multiplexes.
Exactly.
Okay, is there path access from those, what are triplexes, for lack of a better term?
Is it what?
Is there, uh, forest access from these triplexes?
Yeah, directly to the rear.
Like, does those connect as well to the open space behind it?
It does, they all, they're all able to be accessed, you have to go over Amber to get to it, but you definitely can't, and then we do provide the, the public access off of the cul-de-sac.
So you're trying to keep them from going down the sheer drive?
Well, we don't want the public to go up the sheer drive, that's all. Um, and we will basically say private drive, um, but they, they absolutely have what access, they can go back and hit all of the open space, every single solitary home has access to the open space.
Gotcha, okay. That's it, then, thank you.
I just had a question on, on the yield plan, so, you're, you're required to do the yield plan, so, where, in, in, I see it would be twenty-two. If it played out with, with using the R A, the R A zone, is that what we refer to, or is it open space?
No, it uses the traditional conventional R A.
R A, so with R A, your yield plan shows you'd be able to do twenty-two homes on this.
On thirty-two acres, yes.
Okay, and so, do you, did you, do you have that yield plan that showed that?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I just wanna. Understand how that would play out.
Yeah, of course.
Um, and so then that is four over that, is kind of what you're, yeah.
Just a quick, um, comment on, um. The two houses where the driveway is brought to the right of way. You're having frontage.
We are absolutely, we do have frontage only on those driveways to the extent of twenty feet, we are asking for a waiver, so, the general waivers were, I think. Eighty feet, and then for those, we had, those two, we asked for twenty, because we, we really don't wanna have anything wider going across the. The. Right of ways from the C R.
Uh, yeah, it's exactly now, Peter Street's actually right over there. It's under the control of D C R, of course.
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah, they're, yes.
So, um.
So this yield plan, though, required D C R, though, right?
This yield plan does use the D C R waves, yes.
Meaning it would have required D C R to approve this, right?
So D C R doesn't necessarily have to approve, approve the streets, we're allowed to approve the streets, that's one of the benefits of the way the easement was drafted. And that actually was confirmed by the, um. The, the court case of the Romeos and, and, um, that Dale Hellcheck had actually filed. So the result was, it, it's been confirmed that all D C R ways can be used as access, what you have to do is just go before, um, D C R to the extent we want to. What is it, I mean, it's very minor things, we have to go before the D C R anymore.
It's kind of complex, but it involves lots of water and stuff like that, and the town would affect occupancy.
Well, that we can't, so under the conventional plan, you would not get the rights to the road, that's very complicated, and that would never would be able to get, there would never be able to be public streets. They would always have to be private streets.
D C R doesn't mind if you wanna fix one of their roads.
Doesn't mind if we do it, but they're not going to allow the town to acquire title, because then, this is why, quite frankly, this is why we didn't use them, because what we would have to do, while we could build them out. We would have to, you know, maintain them as private, we can't give. We can't give them to the town. The town wanted to be able to have um, you know, chapter ninety funds for them, number one. Number two, it, these roads don't work well for the OSRT at all. They're just too long.
Well, I did, I still think that you have trouble if you're going to use the driveways for frontage.
We're we're going to only use that one section. We can broaden it, but then it has to cut down, cut down because we don't own, we don't own the DCRs. It's uh, it's basically.
He's looking at them like, oh, wait a minute.
Is Lucas in the same position in the yield plan that does, that you have now?
Is Lucas the?
Is it a bigger cut in the same spot?
Yes, roughly, yeah. And uh, Mr. Pierce, uh, I have discussed a construction access front of those two driveways, uh, like DCR. And they're, okay, we're good.
Yeah, they're generally good, if you want to fix their roads or make their roads better, they're all for it.
Oh, yeah. They don't have to pay.
But the problem comes when after fixing that, uh, and somebody wants to drive down the Priscilla to get access to the thing, they're going to cross the driveway.
Oh, yeah.
Which would be trespassing.
No, so it would, they literally have the right to do so. We have to maintain them as open. So it'd be shocking if somebody did want to do that only because that road is not developed. So if you were to try and drive Priscilla, you might be able to get to certain portions, but you can't get all the way to Harold Park. Because that intersecting, oh, are you, you can see the intersecting, we're gonna set you by the.
Yes.
Yeah, and we're not, we're.
We're not playing the bridge tonight.
Right, and the other problem with using the DCR roads, look at all the, all of the um, basic intrusion into the wetland. You have tons of.
Part of it kind of a mess.
Yeah, they are.
When you go and go over it after a number of years, everything will grow in.
I mean, we do have. But we do have an obligation. So you know how there was that one part that I had shown you on the other plan where we, there's a replication area that we're required to fix, number one. Number two, we also are required to ensure that any disruption in the, I hate to keep bringing up, there's a court case. Any disruption that occurred as a result of some activity on that Amber Road that impacted, you know, the Romeo's ability to use it. We're supposed to even it out. Um, you know, there was removal of a tremendous number of personal items in that roadway that was, should never have been there, that's right. So those being removed are not something that have to be replaced. It's just that you can't have, you know, you can't have gone in, cut down trees and then made a big hole in front of somebody's driveway that existed. Those are the types of things we have to correct. Um.
I also, the other comment was on uh, traffic. And I saw that, uh, I guess, you know, site sighting study, you know, or whatever. And I think everybody that's here is like, I know it's picking the eighty-five percentile speed and up thirty-one miles an hour, but that you know, that street is, it gets on hot rotters. Maybe that's in the fifteen, uh, but it's, I just, I'm concerned because just, you know, ten extra miles per hour is another hundred feet you need, you know? So I'm not sure, pulling out, you know, of the, if you want to go back to your, you know, as a plan. And in looking to your right, that's going to be a hot corner where they're coming down. The only thing that'll slow people down is if someone's at North Street pulling out or whatever, they kind of tap the brakes. But if there's no one at North Street, you know, they're going for home, you know, and they bunch it around that corner.
Coming the other way, Dave, same problem. They come around that straight grid, they come around the corner, they slow down, come around the corner, but then they see those straight grids and they accelerate.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a. I get it, and I understand too, John, though, what traffic works and I think, you know, they, they're being fair, you know? But it's, I just think real world, I think we need a little bit more, we need to pay a little more attention to it. So that's a concern for me is the, that corner. Yeah, so it shows the three thirty-five, but like I said, it goes to four hundred thirty-five, four forty, if you just go ten miles an hour more. So it doesn't give you as much time. I I was looking at it as I came around the corner today and I know it's dusk, so when I, I, I come from the direction to the right here and then I'm coming down North Street. But as I approached, I could see just the, call it the right side of North Street as I came around the corner. That's how much that the ledge cropping really cuts off your view. So you do not get eyes on on a car till, as you come around the corner from basically where Lucas will, really until you, you'll ju, you just see the corner of North Street. And that's when you can pick up a car. Um, so I don't know, I mean, I I just don't know if I'm super comfortable with with the sighting right now of that street. But it just, I'm just raising one of my concerns.
No, in in, those are legitimate. We simply provided this to let you know, look at it as it stands, this situation, you know, based on standards is is okay. But we're going to do a full site assessment and traffic report when we file for a definitive. And at that point, the traffic consultant may in fact have some, you know, suggestions for mitigation to ensure that, you know, even that fifteen percent title, you know, that outlier isn't going to cause issues. And then there'll be, you know, various mitigation measures that we suggest. Um, you know, we did look at that, I think this protocol, you actually asked us to. We looked at the ledge outcropping, there's nothing we can do, it's all on private property.
Yeah, I understand that.
But as far as, as far as the traffic report, we're definitely going to do a full traffic report with the subdivision um approval. At this point, we just want to show you that the minimum.
Yeah, you have any comments or?
No, I'd love to see the traffic report because that that is a tough.
Well, it's a sighting.
Well, they're gonna do this, you're gonna go through this again. Once we finalize the last hour. Uh, and I'm just curious, excuse me one second. Um, so the the report that you have now, when was that dated, that report?
February twentieth.
Yeah, it's pretty recent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, on you.
And would that have traffic council?
But the uh, thirty-one miles an hour.
I've never seen you go thirty-one more than that. It's rising even more.
But I'm trying to say, I mean, Dave's point could, I mean, they they go faster than that, so I mean.
I mean, there are people, they said there are people that go go fast, but based on the, you know, November data, that really is, really is the average. But, you know, yeah.
It's the other one point five cars, that's what, that's what we're talking about. Yeah.
I know, I know, it'd be different, you know, but we, we run into this a lot with consultants. And especially like traffic consultants, you know, where they're going to put a light in or something, everybody, oh, this is going to be horrible. And then once the light gets in for a while, they say, wait a minute, this is great. They just, you know, it's hard to, it's hard sometimes to characterize how good of a job they actually do.
Right, but we are, sorry, you're going to be able to talk to them, you're going to have, be able to have your peer of yours, you know, possibly our traffic consultant. We'll have the traffic consultant come in. And as I said, at that point, my guess is there will be, you know, proposals for mitigation based on that.
Well, I would probably, knowing what it's like, we probably want to see a a sign there indicating an entry or there of some kind of warning sign related, you know.
Yeah, some sort of traffic calling.
I know the signs go right out on the streets, slowing down, but enough people pay attention to it. If you could say one, you've done the job, so.
Yeah, and I'd say attractive, I think that coming south on the April Street, fully, I think, has a worse sight line.
Oh, totally, absolutely. Yeah.
I mean, I don't pull out of there frequently.
Yeah.
It's not great, but it's, I, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure you have your. Though it's, you had. I think it was Susan Haley from Lindor, she wrote one of the letters that were were in our books. But she, she says she takes that left every morning and God bless her, you know? You get that, no, if you're going right, you can kind of peek out and see, but actually crossing traffic right there is, you know, he was right there.
But this sight line is a lot ahead of time, so.
Yeah, it is actually, it is better than than fully, you're right.
You have to pay attention, you know, coming out of that, coming out of your road. And see, I guess I did do sight mined it when when that was, but it's probably not, I never would have died. Who's on board, huh? Who's on board, Andy?
The one member board at the time.
When I first looked at it, the road ended right up the street, there was a dead end street, all the dead end, you know? The cul-de-sac up here. All right, uh, you, so you're all set, Jeff? Um, yes, I would say, uh, I would, you know, I think this, this like, if I'd love to see a little more sighted, if it was possible, but I don't think, I don't know how much manipulation you can do at the end of that street at this time. Could you need your rounding? I think you're rounding the right on the edge of the lot line there.
It is.
So if Bailey makes it, probably didn't call correctly. Okay.
Don't get up and comment, so.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll talk to the public, please direct all questions to the same name of the address and direct all questions to the chair. Any questions?
Jean-Hard, two forty-seven April Street. Can you bring up the map again with the uh, the traffic lines of the?
Chair, you, you abutters on the south.
The um, sorry, the chief of chief of.
The two forty-seven, one we just did a close up because everyone see their.
Warren.
Warren, I didn't give her name. I know she said it, but I.
Jean-Hard, H R, my wife.
So maybe you can go to the next, yeah, it'll be a show of close up.
Can you zoom into the?
Yeah, they're going to go down so that's a better picture of the next.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's like the next page is better for you because it's a close up.
Well, yeah.
This is why.
They want to.
They're right here.
Okay, yes, uh, so you turn towards the uh, street. That's still not a straight line and might probably is a straight line down to the street.
Oh, like you see, it is like, yeah, but it kind of angles.
Right there. Yeah, that doesn't exist, I probably like a straight line.
Do you have a bomb, do you have a bomb?
Sure, it comes into our product.
Based on the bombs, that is what we have, but our surveyor is looking at everything now, so, you know.
Did you find a bomb there or?
We did find a bomb, so that's what our bomb said, but we still need a surveyor to come back and and basically just, it's the final boundary and the final survey is going to be during the subdivision plan, then you're, it will be, it will be reviewed by survey and certified.
No, it's, it's something that, it's something that sticks in my mind because I went, bro, we nailed that shot to it.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, we'll make sure it's right.
Because aren't you relying on some two thousand three information, I think, when you're on the, on the plans and coverages? Aren't you, aren't you relying on some two thousand three?
Uh, the, the big survey is a two thousand eight eighty-one X plan, which um identifies the block corners. It runs throughout the entire property. So that's what it's currently based on. Uh, post this uh, portion of the permitting phase, we have the LJR engineering doing a full boundary survey for uh, the definitive portion, which will lock in everything. And if, for whatever reason, it isn't correct, um, say it had to slide out to a repeat, that would just notch that on lot ten, uh, a little bit higher, so we can adjust.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make the sight lines different coming out of the development as well?
Um, they're very adequate currently based on the regulations and it would be a negligible change.
Uh, and I do have one more question. With the five markings about to go on the cul-de-sac, you see the cul-de-sac up at the top?
Yeah, yeah, there they are, you see them? So it's on the, on the.
Other side, not inside the. Okay, the, the other side.
Any headlights or whatever, all of that is directed away. And then along with the vegetative buffer, I'm facing your property. Uh, we put that in based on your comments um, last time.
Okay.
And we can't extend the trees around the cul-de-sac too, that's not an issue.
Yeah. But yeah, originally, um, we had some old uh, survey that was provided to us, um, that added your argument. It might have been something um, that was looked at before, so it was just accidentally getting the block line on. We shut it off, we blew it all off just to make sure it was correct. It's based on what we have, that's, that's the best data.
Okay.
So like I said, once we.
I just want to, I just want to make note of it. I can't do it.
No, it's, yeah, thank you.
Um, Daniel, can you just go back up so we can look for it? I'm just wondering, um, I know it's small. Yeah, coming down like this, go this way. And straighten up a little. I mean, by moving that, I mean, you have, you have, you should have got a property behind there to make that work, right?
To increase the radius?
Just, yeah, on that, on that turn, go that way.
Yeah, it's.
You know what I mean, because you're coming out like this and then you're going to turn that way, so now it's an uncomfortable turn.
Yeah, right.
If it's possible to gain just a little bit there, even a little bit of difference.
Or just a bigger trucks.
Yeah, I would think of that, yeah. Right hand turn, so you got it, you got it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. But okay, anybody else from the, have any questions or comments?
I'll have us ask questions first, I think we have other questions.
Yes, on behalf of Mr. Romeo.
Yeah.
My name is Jim DiGiulio, I'm an attorney, I represent Mr. Romeo. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, good evening. We had submitted a letter and I apologize for the timing of it, but um, I did have some conversations, a brief conversation with Attorney Mann. Voicing our concerns about using Amber Way for access to the open space. Uh, primarily due to the uh, site distance issue and safety issues, lack of sidewalks. Um, I just received information that uh, she is, well, she did indicate to me that they could relocate that access. Apparently they have done that or proposing that. We still have concerns about access uh, coming in through Amber Way. Uh, with the open space now being available and open to the public. Uh, Amber Way could still be used, probably will still be used, and there is a site distance issue there. Uh, in the court case that has been referenced, the um, counsel for the applicant had indicated that uh, referencing the court case, that the judge specifically found that, that intersection at North Street and Amber is a very dangerous intersection. So we are concerned that the public will still uh, attempt to use Amber Way uh, for access to the open space. So if I may ask, the applicant's counsel, are there any plans uh, for that, uh, to discourage that? Any plans to uh, repair the roadway that was disturbed by Mr. Hellcheck? Uh, the driveway of Mrs. Romeo and uh, personal items that were removed from the um, uh, in in front of her house, trees, uh, stone retaining wall? Uh, any plans to repair that, repair or pave that portion of the roadway?
Yeah, so as far as, yeah, I have no legal right to deny anybody the ability to use Amber. You'd actually have to go to DCR and have them rescind the right of the public to access. I I cannot do that. Um, what we did do to discourage it is we removed those parking spaces, put them on the, what will be the subdivision roadway so that we didn't have to have the issue because we do understand that Amber has a difficult site.
There is another point, and I think I've kind of made it before. Uh, Jim, they, what, what um, what we hope will happen is that uh, will discourage people from using that, and it'll just grow in because nobody's going to maintain it. So the area is just going to grow all back in again, other than the part that might be used to access, one of the, either one of the two houses that are right close to the road there, and hopefully that will happen and that will be the end of it.
And and with regard to the removal of personal items, they shouldn't have been there and they were moved and had, the Dale Hellcheck, who was the owner, had the right to remove them. But with regard to um, making sure there's a smooth transition between um, the Romeo property in that way. We have to ensure that that condition is put back to what it was before, so we will do that. Will we fix the um, we will, of course, absolutely, but we are not replacing, personal property wasn't properly placed.
When you say we will fix that, are you planning on paving a portion of Amber?
No, we are, what we are going to do, we aren't going to develop Amber at all. What we're going to do is make sure that the prior condition um, over which the Romeos had accessed the property will be restored. So they will be able to access their property clearly and in the same condition as it happened before. And it's always been, I think it's Graff, John, was it Graff?
Uh, more John was there, more John was there.
So what was disturbed, only Graff was disturbed?
So when Dale went in, he took out trees and he disturbed property. I don't know the exact extent, and then we want to meet with them out there, and we still will, to go out and see what the condition is. But we have no intention of paving, you know, Amber.
So you're saying great, you're getting greatly, basically.
No, we'll probably go in and regrade, but again, we have to look at it. We really, we haven't walked the site with Mr. Romeo and we have. You know, like I called, so Jim DiGiulio and I had a conversation. He had to leave the conversation because of other matters. This is a, I didn't see the letter until tonight. I had told him during that call, I would take away all access over Amber. It wouldn't be an issue and the five parking spaces will be moved and we would do what we were required to do pursuant to the order. Absolutely, not a problem.
But the order doesn't specify what that, that restoration.
It only says restoration, but it entails the use of it because Dale Hellcheck's original plan had been to actually use Amber as an access to a subdivision. But that's just, I mean, you saw the, the site distance, it's not practical. You really can't use that. So we don't, so it's, it's kind of, um, gray in that area. That's why we need to, you know, that, that site aside, but I can assure you, we will not be paving that Amber Way.
Okay, Jim, any further questions, Jim?
Yeah, comments if I may.
Sure.
Someone who still has some concerns here that these are two separate, uh, developments. The, and, and may I ask, uh, will his letter be put into the record?
I'm sorry, which letter will it be to, uh?
And I'm sorry for the, the time you had, but.
But yeah, let's put in, yeah, and they, and again, I hope you heard, they, they basically, uh, don't see, don't, at this point, don't see any problem with it being handled as a single subdivision.
I, I understood and, and it, it wa, it is a concern of ours, but, um, moving, uh, from that, uh, again, it's not clear to me is whether or not Mr. Hellcheck or the applicant is going to be, uh, restoring the, the roadway that he disturbed, um, prior to the litigation. Uh, and, and by the way, he's the one that initiated the litigation against Mrs. Romeo. Uh, disturbed it to the extent that there's flooding issues there. It was, the project was abandoned, uh, after the, they got their right to use the roadway to access three lots, three house lots. Uh, and that was the part of the judge's decision, uh, but the judge also required him. Uh, when he told the judge and fought for the right to build these roads, uh, the court found that by paving the roads, uh, and by, uh, complying with the storm management plan that they had proposed, that would alleviate any concern. So essentially what we have is a road that has been left, uh, in disrepair, uh, still have flooding issues that were created by Mr. Hellcheck. Uh, uh, issues with the driveway that he was ordered to repair when he put the road in. Um, and, uh, the, a question is, is, uh, is the driveway going to be graded and repaired? Uh, is the flooding issue going to be addressed? I guess that's.
Okay, Jim, I have a question, I have a question about these, about the flood issue. So Robert, you know about flooding?
Not aware.
Not aware of flooding. Okay, are you aware of flooding, Jim?
We need to go out there and have.
Okay, so I think that, um, before we can answer any of those questions, Jim, we're gonna have to go out and take a look and see where the flooding is occurring. I mean, if it's occurring further back, that's one thing, but if it's occurring in an area that would disturb the access to the driveway, perhaps it might be something done. Is that what you would like to see?
Yeah, ye, yes, absolutely. Uh, absolutely. That's, that's, uh, certainly a concern. Uh, and, and I'll just move on in terms of the, um, I just want some clarity here because the plans are showing D C R right away. D C R, uh, has the fee in that, in Priscilla and in, um, Amber Road, uh, not a right of way. Uh, they, they own the fee. What I do see on the yield plan, unless it's been amended, and again, I, I just saw the, the amendments with regard to the change in the access to the open space, um, probably about an hour or two ago, but, um, the yield plan appears to show, um, a house or houses on Priscilla Road. Uh, smack on Priscilla Road. Uh, we also have the concern about the driveways that are coming across Priscilla Road, the private driveways that are coming across Priscilla Road. Um, again, a, along with the invitation, we believe, to the general public to come in through Amber Road to use that open space. Um, again, unless the yield plan is, is changed or I'm not reading it correctly. Uh, I don't know how they can show that, uh, there's a, um, uh, that they, they were able to put in the number of lots that were, uh, being proposed without, uh, crossing Amber Road with private driveways, uh, Priscilla Road, I should say, with private driveways or, um, uh, having a, having a house, uh, shown on the yield plan.
Okay, we, we want to also identify those issues, Jim. And, and we're actually in the process of trying to get better answers out of the town council and out of, uh, and out of D C R because we're not gonna make any decisions tonight because we're still, we're still, we're still, um, researching and still looking for information to, to answer that exact question. So we'll certainly, as we, as we go along, as we get more answers, we'll certainly keep you up to date on those.
And tha, and thank you, yes. And, and you know, that was help some of the concerns. Um, and we still have some questions about whether or not, um, the, uh, lots were held in common ownership, uh, at the time of the, uh, the bylaw. Uh, and again, I assume that the board will, will look into that to see whether or not, uh, the, what has actually happened, uh, is, um, consistent with what's required under Article ten, section two hundred dash forty-eight. Um, in terms of common, uh, ownership and whether or not these, um, parcels are contiguous parcels.
I think that one of the decisions that we do have is that the, uh, they do not necessarily have to be contiguous. They can be part of a subdivision even though they're not contiguous. So that is one, I think that, I believe town council gives that as one, uh, answer. So, um, we're, we're working on the rest of that because it is a little, a little, uh, messy because of what was put and done in the past, but we'll get it all worked out. Anything else, anything else of a consequence that you'd like us to work on?
Um, i- if I may ask, uh, Mr. Romeo if he wants to comment?
Not this time. I, I think, uh, I think you covered everything.
Okay. All right. And, and again, the letter, uh, addresses some preliminary concerns, the major concerns. And again, I just saw the, um, the, the, the new plan recently, so we'll take a, another look at it as well.
Yeah, and, and you have, and also there's a couple of things that are gonna require guarantees. Those aren't guaranteed because we don't have a definitive plan. We're still basically just trying to determine whether or not the site qualified as a site for an open space residential development. If it does, then, then they can go into doing the preliminary, a definitive plan where a lot of these other questions will have to be answered definitively.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your input tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, one second. Yes.
I just wanted to point out that the, uh, letter, um, from Attorney Giulio that was referred to was, uh, dropped into the Sheriff Island around seven o'clock. Cause that's when we received it. So I'm assuming no one had a chance to read it. I just wanted to make it over there.
Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah, she's just saying that we didn't, uh, we didn't get your letter, Jim, in time. So it didn't go out to all the members of the board, but it'll be going out by tomorrow.
It won't there.
We need to go all the way here. It's rather, we're gonna don't. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go through everything and, and, uh, again, any further in, if you think that you have, let us know and we'll, uh, we'll do what we can to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Okay, did you want to make a comment?
No, I agree. It's just about the yield plan.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's probably the best, the best thing is probably till we, till we get, I apologize. Town council's response because that really just is gonna put to rest a lot of issues and, and then I can, and I would like to honestly, I hope that Tom Romeo and Jim Giulio are going to be receptive to actually meeting out at the site because the only way for us to answer those questions are to actually see it. And we have not been able to do that. So, you know, over the next week, I will try and reach out to Mr. Giulio to have that site meeting because I think it's imperative.
Yeah, I think if you take the, these guys go out, take a look at what, what, what the talk is about as far as, um, where flooding is happening and, and, and because if it's just a road, road grading, I'm, I would imagine we could probably work something out.
We're gonna have to work it out, definitely.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, this is a big problem. Let's take care of it.
Exactly. We agree.
Okay, good. Okay, we're gonna continue this. So, uh, do you have a motion to continue this?
I'm sorry, can I ask, Hannah, over?
I'm sorry, do you have another?
I have another question. I have a zoning question. Is, is there any other R M multi-family developments in the middle of a single family development zone? In the town or is this precedence?
So I, I could address that. So the open space residential design by law allows for that. Um, so it's actually something that's allowed in all of, in not all, but several of our residential, single family.
I continue with somewhat of a, it's a one thirteen Hable Street. Where along the road, you used to be, that's all multi-family and those, those condos and it's surrounded by single family homes.
But that, that's zone R M.
Right, that's on R M. Um, this is zone R A, um, but the, the O S R D application process, it'll, because it's in our bylaw, that is actually allowed use in, uh, under these conditions.
Oh, wait, I know. So I'm asking, is this a precedence that this will be the first R A within R M zone?
It's not R M zone though. It's in open space residential design, which is a different, it's just different from a rezoning. It'd be, the underlying zoning remains, um, it's, it's allowed within that zoning structure. I, I, I'd have to look to see if there are other multifamilies in an R A zone, but it's not allowed by R A. It's allowed by the O S R D within R A.
And with O S R D, one of the requirements is that the, any of the multi-family or more than one need to not be necessarily , um, abiding the, the single family homes. So that's why I think the way they're citing it right now is they're putting it off further into the site. I'm just making that assumption because that is one of the requirements and we'll get that bite at the apple later. I think right now what we're trying to determine is whether or not this would comply with this versus just looking at it as a regular development, which that's why it's important that I wanted to undertake myself, but also the public understand that if they want to just go in and make houses, there's twenty-two houses, you know? So just to be clear, it's twenty-six versus twenty-two is the difference, the yield. So it's not, this isn't like, oh, they could only put five houses in here and now look at, look at what they're doing. They're putting twenty-six in. It's, it's not a huge jump. And it does comply with a zoning bylaw that's been in there for a while with, with the open space. It's just that, you know, not everyone's willing to give up fifty percent of a large development to open space, you know? Uh, that's the kind of reward it is. It's, it's part of the carrot with that zoning is you give us fifty percent open space and we'll let you develop a little more dense. And that's kind of the zoning, you know?
But did you just say that multi-family homes would not abide the single family homes?
Well, that's one of the, if you look at all the different design things we have, and that's again, this is later, but there are all these different aesthetic things. Um, you know, everything form, uh, landscaping, everything that we're not touching right now, but one of them is the sighting of, you know, where those houses are. They should not necessarily abide. So if you're looking at Lucas, those should not necessarily abide a residential. Now, it doesn't mean they can't. It's just saying that's the intent is not to have them right next to a single family grouping of homes.
So a townhouse is not considered multi-family?
It's multi-family. If you look at the definition in our own bylaws, it's four, I think technically.
Right, but you're only allowed, like you're limited in the O S R D as to how many units you can have. So you can't have like big buildings. So they have to be all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, I'm trying to just, you know, we're officers, if you will, of the zoning. So it's, it's not like I agree with it. I like North Grinning. I like our big lots and our single families. I'm saying, but we have this zoning in place. And you saw how we're struggling on the very first applicant that was here on the facade. It's like, these are things like we don't have any teeth for this kind of stuff, but you know, um, these are, these are bylaws that, that people wave ahead of me in the past and they're there, you know?
Right, but I'd still like to understand if this is a precedent. Because from the top end that I look at, I don't see any R Ms in R As.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a fair, it's a fair question because it's convenient through a couple ways. Like what's the, what's the precedent? I agree. Are there tons of open space developments in North Grinning? You know, with this kind of provision, I'm not sure. And Danielle's a historian and a lawyer. They would know better.
There are several other O S R Ds, but the ones that I can think of off the top of my head are, um, they're more of the cluster, single family subdivision style. Um, but the bylaw, you know, it, it, it hasn't changed much and it's been in place for decades and decades. And, you know, people have had the opportunity to come in under this, um, under those provisions. Um, they, they haven't much to my, to my knowledge, but there are a few other O S R D developments where you look into a, you know, a single family, you know, an R A district where normally you need a hundred sixty feet of frontage and forty thousand feet in area. And you see twenty thousand square foot lots and, you know, a hundred feet in, in frontage and people are wondering, well, how did that happen? Well, it was allowed through that bylaw that that's been in place for, for many years now. Um, a, as far as whether that's ever extended to using, use of a multi-family provision that's been in there for a long time. That I don't know. I'm not aware of one, but that provision's been in place for a long, long time. It just hasn't really been utilized. So I would say.
I, I can't rattle them off either, you know?
Be it historical.
You guys know better.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out, there is a gentleman on the Zoom that's kind of stand up a few times, Raymond Arsenal. I don't know if you wanted to.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, can you hear me? Ray Arsenal, uh, President Chairman. Um, I just had, I just had a question about, um, I didn't want to bring it back, but I just wanted to know at some point, um, if we would be talked to about like the safety stuff that was being talked about, especially with the traffic. Um, you know, I, I, my road is Amber Road when I come out, essentially when I go left, like sometimes I have to pray that like, you know, no one's coming around that corner. So I was just wanted to, uh, make sure that, you know, um, like when the traffic thing is being done or something like that, if we would, you know, if that's something we would have a chance to talk about and just kind of could, uh, uh, express our safety concerns, um, especially with a new road coming in and people turning right, us turning left. Um, just don't want to run into each other.
Okay, we all agree, uh, we all agree that that particular intersection is dangerous, is difficult. We'd love to be able to do something with it, but, um, it's again, it's private property. Um, we can't, um, legislate any changes in that. Um, there has to be an offer from the property owner or, you know, something to, uh, to do something there, but, um, we do take that very seriously and, and, uh, and, uh, but unfortunately, if they're not gonna be needed, Amber Road is not gonna be used as a, as an access, which it's not in this particular, uh, application. Then, um, it doesn't really, it's not, it's not anything we can do about that because that's the existing situation. So all we do is make sure that any other entrances onto the roadway have proper site distance. And, uh, and that's what we're working on here. But I asked, I asked them to make a small change when they're coming out of Lucasian to make that turn just a little safer, just a little more visibility. So, so, um, we do take, we are working on that. We're not taking that seriously. And, and it will be more, uh, well, uh, fleshed out when we, when we do a definitive plan and it may be a preliminary, you'll be comfortable with that because there are a couple of other issues there. So, so, uh, but then the definitive plan, we will have to make the final decision.
Thank you.
You know, anybody else? I can't see the hands up there, so.
Don't think I see any other hands.
Kind of far away. Okay, then there's, there's no other questions from, uh, from the, from the board. Then, uh, we will continue this and, um, and we'll continue to accumulate as much information as we can and answer some of these questions so that we know. Okay, Ryan.
Mr. Chairman, a room that can be a planning commission vote is about the hearing for seven Charles Street and two quarter of that Hable Street until Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, eight P L.
A motion, that's okay. Is there a vote, Jeremiah?
Hi.
Brian, hi. Hi, David, and myself, bye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, no, I thought it was. You know, there's, there's.
Yeah. Uh, it seems like Daniel said, I'm, I'm. Especially if you're.
I'm impressed you've spent some of your time there. See, I think this is a little bit. Thank you.
You got mosquito? You like that guy?
Good evening. I'm attorney Josh Latham here to now to behalf of Richard Costa, who's the owner of one and three Railroad Avenue. We actually have Peter O'Grady online. Uh, he had the injuries, we couldn't hear the person's seat. Uh, but he's going to present for us a roadway improvement plan. Thank you, bro.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, address the board. Can everybody hear me? Yeah. Yeah, Danielle, could you put up the roadway improvement plan? Uh, last we left this, uh, Danielle sent us the standards for roadway improvement plan in North Reading. And, uh, we've worked on, uh, designing a, uh, roadway improvement plan that's as close to compliance as we can. But there are a couple of challenges that we thought we would like to talk to the board about this evening. Can, can you get it up?
Is it this on the, um?
It's the roadway improvement plan, not this place. Yeah. So.
Is that the road profile here?
Profile, yeah.
Yeah, road profile. Uh, the first standard that you had was we needed to have a twenty-foot right-of-way and we have that. Uh, and then you wanted eighteen feet of pavement. Um, but, uh, the, uh, unfortunately, we have a challenge in that there are a bunch of telephone poles in the right-of-way that extend in about four feet. And so, uh, it's, it's really impossible to meet the eighteen feet. Uh, we could widen the right-of-way in our, uh, area where we own it, but we can't widen it in our butters. In addition, the roadway coming in was not quite, uh, eighteen feet wide in some areas. It's down to sixteen feet. And we wanted some input on, on the board, from the board as to, uh, how that might be addressed or if the sixteen-foot reduction at the location of the telephone poles would be acceptable. The other thing is we don't have the space to put the, uh, turning circle requirement. But we have designed a Y-type turnaround, as you can see on the, uh, very eastern, uh, extent of the roadway, um, to, uh, accommodate the turning of a fire truck and it's certainly much better than anything they have down there now. So, uh, those two, two items, we really can't meet the, uh, the standard. And then the, uh, the next question we had was, uh, what the next steps would be for the roadway improvement plan? We have designed a drainage system in compliance with the stormwater management requirements, anticipating going to the conservation commission at some point in, in this process. Um, and then, uh, if, if, uh, if we might solicit some comments on those two items that where we don't have compliance, I'd, I'd entertain some discussion.
If you know, if I, if I may, um, what's the end game here? Um?
The end game, the end game is create two lots. Uh, and we do have a site plan. Danielle, do you want to put that up? We have a site plan as to how it would be used if, if and when the roadway improvement plan is, is accomplished, we would create two building lots, uh, that, uh, could, uh, house uh, to how, to, uh, uh, single-family dwellings, uh, with septic systems across the roadway. We talked with the health department about that already. He seemed to be happy with that concept. So we think we can meet the stormwater management requirements and, uh, and, uh, the conservation requirements, uh, based on all the constraints to have the two, the two lots. Um, and that would be the end game once the roadway improvement plan was approved.
All right, uh, first of all, well, the poles, it, it appears you have enough land, um, on the, um, on the side there, we have enough land to put the houses and everything, they can move the poles over.
Well, we can, we can move the poles over or we can widen the right-of-way on our property. Uh, but we can't do it on the adjoining property. The, the current limit of the pavement is shown on the plan there. It's just in front of that thing that's, that's, uh, labeled as a vinyl garage. It's a vinyl-sided garage, actually. The pavement ends there, but the poles, um, are about four feet into the layout as they come down. So there, there's nothing we can do about it for that section until we get beyond the, uh, property that we don't own.
I see. So the poles in the roadway and are in the right-of-way, the poles are in the right-of-way, which is only twenty feet wide, you say?
That's correct, yes.
So, so, so you can't get outside that twenty feet?
We can't get outside the twenty feet and, uh, we can't, we can pave it eighteen feet wide everywhere where the poles occur. I think there are probably three poles that occur within the area that we can't do it. We could, as I say, we can widen the right-of-way once we get to within the applicant's property and, uh, and give it the full eighteen feet there. But we can't do it as, uh, the pinch point comes in. It would be about sixteen feet wide at the pole locations.
What, what, the poles are from the left, left, left here? Yeah, that's, this is, this is the garage, I think. Garage? Can't see it very well. So on the south side of the plant over there, that's what they are. This is the dynamic turnaround, yeah. So the poles must be up here because Steve's houses and everything are down here. So I would say up to this line here, he doesn't have any, he doesn't own any. And it's from here on that he can make changes.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, so, um, um.
What, what, do you mind me asking, what's, it's a rather large building. What, what kind of building is this residential or?
Single-family homes.
Jeez.
Two single-family homes.
Whoa, it's forty-five by eighty. That's thirty-six hundred square feet. It's seventy-two hundred.
It'd be houses, okay. Wow. Because, exactly, you know, I mean, but, you know.
It's bigger than.
And a lot of the, the ten hundred foot foundations was cut to be standard, yeah. So.
The proposed buildings are only schematic. I, I, I don't think that they would end up being quite that size, but, uh, the applicant, how big a, a footprint he could put on the proposed lot.
Well, absolutely. Okay, with the restriction, Peter, on the cul-de-sac, what, what is that proposed subject reserved there for? Like adjacent to the hammerhead?
Well, you, you would be looking for a cul-de-sac with a hundred.
Oh, we'll bring it across.
Yeah, been questioned. I, I, that's been done before. That's not a natural new thing. But, um, Lot G is.
But, um, someone else's.
Are these perks, Peter? Like you know that works.
Still gravel, yeah.
But, but with a bank.
There have, there have been perk tests in the past and I believe this is all an outwash plane. I think it's all good gravel.
There you go. I know the area well. If it helps, uh, Lot G and beyond that is actually town-owned land. Okay. Um, taking my tax title, they, they just get from.
Down this way.
So Lot G and then onward for the right, how you get to use.
That's, that's correct. That land is owned by the town.
Uh, buildable, Danielle?
Is it buildable? I don't know. I have to explore it.
Um. So how many, how many, what's my scale here anyway? How many feet do I have from this lot line to that lot line where, where you have the common land on the other side?
Uh, well, it starts back where, where the condos. Uh, it's, it's not quite that wide if you, if you go to the, uh.
Yes, we're talking five, seven, five, no, no, four, five is a condos here.
The, the pavement actually narrows at the condos down to about sixteen feet. Now, I, I was proposing that we would widen it everywhere. There's not a phone pole. I think you can see the phone poles are located on, on the plant. Uh, there are, I think, three of them in the land that we don't own. Um, where it would, it would narrow down to sixteen feet roughly.
Well, the issues come not so much on a nice day, but when it's too big to snow. If we ever get snow again, um.
Well, if global warming, we're not going to get any more snow.
Yeah.
You get that right. Um. If I may, there's a reason why, I mean, this, this, you know, there's a reason why we have to, we need the eighteen feet. The fire department also has a minimum of eighteen feet that they say they need for their, for their equipment. Uh, that's, they, they've always been the driving force between that, that we have. Um, and these are not green-bottled lots. So this is creating, this is subdivision. This is creating, using the street improvement plan. So, um, that twenty-foot right-of-way. I mean, obviously, and you're the property that you own, obviously, assuming you own both sides of the street, so you own to the middle of the road. That's pretty standard on these old right-of-ways here.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. But it helps just for context. I, I did print out, if I could submit to you, it's just a copy of the plan for the condo that it actually approves, uh, the same roadway up to Hable Street. Yeah. Leading down to, I think it's one lot before the one you see on track. There is an existing single-family home next to us, which is one that we can improve in front of. So that is an existing access. This entire road is an existing accessway for that property. Our property was historically four separate houses. Um, we, we accept those are abandoned at this point. Um, but, you know, old houses along the old railroad tracks, probably the heart of the whole railroad system back under the old branch.
Oh, yeah. About the old rules on these things, you gotta tell you that.
Exactly, exactly right. Um, so really the idea is the twenty-foot right-of-way, um, it does provide access to the site. It is reflected prior to subdivision control laws, so it does exist as an existing way. The improvement is, you know, we just have that challenge that Peter's mentioned. We can't seem to improve that one choke line in front of that other house.
Why can't you improve it?
Well, because of that, that existing telephone pole. That telephone pole becomes a challenge. Um, moving that telephone pole, we're not sure exactly, you know, how exactly we can do that.
Yeah, well, see, it's the not sure thing.
Yeah.
But I'm sure they can be moved.
I, I'm sure anything with, with enough time, money and effort, right, it could get there. The question is.
RMLD better than R resource.
I will agree with that, yes.
So, so, um, well, I mean, I, I, um, I would hesitate to, to be, to go along with this without getting us up for eighteen feet. I would hesitate without putting some effort into the road over that pole. And I think that's, uh, I think that's probably what you would, uh, you would need to do. I think you need to get us at eighteen feet all the way down. I, I, and, and it's not, I, we ought to, whoever goes, whoever buys those houses down the end, um, make sure that we provide, we're saving adequate access. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about. You said poles, Hable Street.
I mean, what, what you'd be asking us to do is to get the electric company to, to, uh, make a taking for an easement on private property. And I think that would be a hard thing to do.
Well, I don't know whether or not who owns the property.
Well, the, uh, the existing house that we're showing there belongs to a neighbor, not, not to the applicant. The applicant's property lines start at that, uh, property lines labeled two hundred and sixty-six feet there. So that, uh, it would be, it would be a taking on private property.
Well, is that, is that really necessary? Have they been asked?
Say again?
Have they been asked if it's okay to move the pole?
Well, well, you got to move it someplace. I mean, you got a twenty-foot right-of-way. You're talking about trying to move it back.
I asked, they had it right on the edge. You, you were not, you're not pretty close to what you need.
I suppose we could ask them if they could do that, if they could move the poles back.
Yeah, just move them all the way to the very edge of the road at the very least. So, but my, but the other question is, is, is that, has this been surveyed yet, Peter? Has somebody gone out and determined that there's only exactly twenty feet here?
Yeah, we've actually surveyed the entire piece and, and, uh, pinned down the right-of-way and the whole, the whole thing. And the poles are consistent. They're about four feet in from the edge of the, uh, right-of-way.
We'll look back for your.
Peter, are you sure they're power too? Is it, they're not like Verizon's poles? They're, they're definitely like RMLD?
Oh, they're definitely, um, municipal, uh, you know, electric poles. I don't know. I don't know if it's sufficient to serve these houses or not. We haven't got that far with the, uh, with the electric company. But I, I, I think it would be hard to move it back right to the edge of right-of-way and get the eighteen feet because, you know, most, most of the poles have a cross arm or, or some kind of a bracket and that can't overhang the private property. My thought was that it was not a big issue to have it narrowed down just at the location of the pole. And we were proposing a berm on that side of the roadway, uh, that, that could run along the poles and then, uh, you know, stop at the pole and then, uh, continue on. And so that it would just be a pinch point at the location of the poles.
Peter, would you go underground, you know, just from that first pole that pops out and then just, you know, go, you're going to probably need a transformer anyways, just for the two buildings.
Well, I'm sure we're going to need a transformer. We may need a new line. The cost of underground is kind of expensive, but, uh, if that's the only solution, I guess we could, uh, we could talk to the, uh, RMLD about doing that.
Well, you could also, you know, unless you got to continue it down to this other North Reading lot, but you could also have it shorter. So it doesn't have to go three poles down. So your primary would be somewhere in the middle there and then secondary into the houses, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that does create the problem of servicing the existing house, uh, underground because, uh, it's now an overhead service.
The existing house that's.
The existing, the applicant does not own, yes.
Okay, is this one in the bottom, bottom right?
Okay, that's, your plan is not there, but it's right kind of there.
Around six.
What, the garage you're talking about?
More than all of it, we're out, right?
Is the existing. So the roadway side of the roadway, it just shows the kind of the front of the building. It doesn't. Yeah, and they're all on that side.
Yeah, so, oh, it's on the what? The house is on the north side. Uh, I see, yeah, correct. Yeah. It's helpful to see these poles on this plan.
I mean, I guess the.
Yeah, you can't see them. They're on there, but you can't see them.
See on the box of all.
They're not on this plan that we have on.
The expectation then would be that we would widen the, uh, the, uh, right-of-way through the condo to, uh, to get it to be eighteen feet as well.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see what the, you know, I mean, I mean, I mean. It, I think it needs to be done.
Well, at least we're allowed to.
Yeah, there's a hardship there. Yeah. The, 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 the poles.
Yeah, you can see there's the, the edge of pavement and then the utility pole there. That's where it gets down to about sixteen feet.
Yeah, well, I don't see the poles, but.
Uh, is this the pole here?
Yeah, what? Yeah, that's, that's the pole, yeah.
That's the pole.
Yeah, little squiggly circle. Yep, then the one near, right near you, Ryan, where the seventy-two pontoon line is right above it. All the way to the end of the page. Going, right there, yeah. So what's in the middle somewhere there?
Yeah, there's going to be one coming back. Oh, he's looking the only way over that wire.
Oh, maybe, maybe.
The pole right there.
Maybe it's that one that just jumps past the line. See it? It's a little bit above.
There's going to be another, another one there, yeah.
Where is it?
Yeah, I can't see it. It may not be on there. I, I know where it's, it's.
You know, there, there are other poles. If you, if you go to the, uh, to the east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Behind you. With the overhead wires way out here.
Yeah, that's the, the OHW is the overhead wires.
Yeah, I get that. Um, I just couldn't see another pole. So, so. Uh, I would, I would say, uh, I would, you know, some effort would need to be put into, um, seeing that we need to move on getting the, the. I would, I would say, I would, you know, some effort would need to be put into seeing that we need to move on getting the, and I.
Well, interesting what the commissioner is saying is that the eighteen feet is not negotiable, so we need to move the pole.
I mean, I think it takes me very bad to have an approval added to do that, and I would say either moving the pole or going underground. Because underground works good for the, well, let's see, it's gonna be underground of the house anyway. So.
Okay, well, then, the, how about the Y turnaround? Is that something that the board thinks they?
We've agreed to those hammerhead forms. Those hammerhead turnarounds, as long as they're big enough, we'll be presenting it to the fire department as well, Peter, as you all know, and they'll, they'll comment on it, as long as they look at it, decide they can turn their biggest engine around. But if they see sixteen feet on their plan, they won't even talk to us.
What's their current turnaround of the condos? Just pulling into one of these.
Yeah, I think, and one of the, there are, what is this, supplies for them? Yeah, yeah, I believe that's, that's all.
Okay, well, the next question we had was, what are the next steps? Assuming that we can either negotiate underground or move the poles to the very edge of the layout and get the eighteen feet. This has to have a public hearing?
Yeah.
So we would file plan and notify us and?
Yeah, we have a public hearing.
Subdivision planning for roadway, subdivision planning.
Yeah, this is, this would be a subdivision. Well, well, these two lots, do these two lots exist already?
There are two lots presently, although we also acknowledge my client owns both of them, so there is a merger.
Okay, so there is a, there is a subdivision there.
Yeah, so the question, so there are four existing houses, they're in terrible condition, they're abandoned, but under the subdivision control, other than the exception to subdivision for pre-existing structures. So technically, as an A and R, you can separate and create two lots. What you can do with those lots is a separate question, but it does allow the board to do an A and R plan approval endorsement. That would allow for two lots based on at least one of those principal structures still exists.
If we did a street improvement plan, then you could, then theoretically, could A and R those, we want to be in the.
Okay, so I guess it's up to, you know.
Yeah, I think it's, we're in, to our due diligence on, on the roadway improvement itself, come back to the board, and that, I guess, helps make that decision from there.
Yeah. Yeah. And not going to hit the other, other than, you know, who owned what, what we got here, we're just looking at roadway, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you let, you own the land, the lot. Yeah, as long as we can prove that the roadway is, so we can probably A and R.
Do you know, would you any, just curious, diligence wise, on the town lands beyond this?
You mean, as far as whether the town has any plan?
Like how big the land is?
Well, I mean, I think we'd get, we're spending any amount of time too in this. We would want to make sure that we're helping that, the viability of that lot. If it's, you know, there's some self-interest in it for North Reading too, but, you know.
I mean.
I don't know, it would be completely wet this site, I don't know.
That's what we have now.
Maybe that is their way to establish, I was like, no rush.
Look at that, and see if, we also have a town and land roster with comments and notes on whether the town intends to have any ideas or.
If you go back to the proposed site plan, you'll see that the wetlands go into the right of way eventually there.
Yeah.
I don't think there's much opportunity for future development there.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Whenever we did, whenever we did the one thirteen Abel Street thing there, that was kind of, I knew right then that at some point, this was gonna happen. That this was gonna come in to be built, but.
That's why he stayed on the commission.
Yeah.
Ah, wasn't he jacking off, see, so it's, it's worked out.
They said it was signed up for a vacation, they didn't know it was for a free election. True, yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, so as long as you can, I think you need to put an evidence of the eighteen feet and get, again, and again, you got it underground, you got it underground to the houses anyway, right off the street. Oh, you might as well get it underground down there, I know it's a little expensive, but it's also very safe. Sorry, weather goes, things like that.
No ledge?
Pardon?
No ledge?
Yeah, no, yeah, I know, it's all, all things.
No, I, I don't think there's any ledge, but I think that the, one of the challenges would be to provide the electric service to the existing house, because that's overhead, and there's nothing to make them go underground.
Like, well, the first pole?
Well, we could, we could put one pole on, you know, on the very edge there, I suppose, and come up. I mean, the, the, the electric company usually doesn't like to go underground and then come up above ground again.
Well, so I would say, I would say that you can, if you're gonna move that pole, you can move that pole anywhere. It doesn't have to be on that side of the street, it could be on the other side of the day you own.
Right, except that we can't, we could put it on the other side of the street, but we don't own the property there. Well, we understand that we need to get the eighteen feet, we'll have to deal with it one way or the other. I think we'll have to have a meeting with the electric company and see what we can work out. The expectation would be that we would have to widen the width of the pavement. I mean, I don't know if it's eighteen feet wide all the way through the condo. The pavement.
Twenty five, according to this paper, completely.
What's that? The edge of pavement we're showing here is what was paved, I guess, at the time the condos were built, and it's not eighteen feet wide either.
The twenty, this, this pavement there, it's like blue. Under medium cycle, and shows twenty foot wide all the way to the, right, right, right from Abel Street all the way in. And it looks to be paved, so. I mean, you don't have to go, you have to go out, I have to go look, so we'll take a look at that and get a better idea of what's physically on the ground there.
Well, the condos relocated the right of way and paved it. I don't know that it's the full eighteen feet wide, though.
Yeah, so twenty feet here.
I know it isn't at the very end.
Yeah.
If you go back to the, to that plan.
The dog, make the dog like it goes down to the, down to where it went out, that means the new roadway. Because the old roadway, all, all the railroad out, it's just a, it's not, the new, it's not the entrance anymore, so. All right, we'll see what we can do with that, see if you can get, you know, get us a street improvement plan, see if you can get your eighteen feet, and we'll take a look at it.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hi, Peter. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
You have to take care of yourself now.
Yeah.
Good night.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Marilyn, see who's names up there, she finally joined our meeting.
Deb Maureen, is she really up there?
She on?
And it's probably, probably, you did some.
What's that?
That's just recording it.
Oh, yeah, I'll get it next time now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
That it? Got some VAs.
Yeah, we got some VAs.
So, there's one, a cease and desist, no hearing.
Yeah, do you have to, I do have to see on these, or?
Well, yeah, it's just, if you notice that they're parking these van trucks there.
Yeah.
I've been noticing that too. I didn't know that, Danielle, where's that, like, and just I'm asking for help, where, where, and I guess Jerry's site's hitting a lot, so I should just shut up, but then, where, where does it say you can't have, like, I get that, like, with the other Main Street one, which had heavy equipment, quote unquote, like, you know, excavators or stuff like that, but what, just having like trucks like that too? Where is that in the, in the zoning? Yeah, I was trying to find it, and it was like.
This comes up all the time, it seems.
Yeah. When you get that heavy, more than like, you know, excavators, and that, that was even kind of the stuff around, it's a pretty plumber.
Right, and that's in the.
Whereas these are just like vans, you know, essentially. But they're, they are big trucks, yeah, but what I mean is they're, you know, van trucks.
Oh, they're, they're, oh, the box, dude.
But I just meant it's not like heavy.
It's a man's target, but.
Yeah.
It could be too, that that type of a truck, because it's not specifically mentioned in the zoning, might be assumed to be prohibited, I don't know, I probably will make that assumption.
And maybe that's their argument too, because I don't know what they're.
Well, if it's storage of trucks, I mean, that might be different than just parking them there.
I know.
So, yes, there's a, there's a thing in there in the business, just HB, I mean, that says you can't lease a portion of your lot that would, you know, go into your required, you know, but that's a big lot.
Yeah.
Like, in a very little building, so I don't think that one kicks in. And, and plus, you have to prove it's like a lease, or something, it could just be.
Oh, this would be on the.
It could be, you know, I'm just letting you park them there, you can get around it, et cetera.
So you can store the lobster?
Yeah.
That just comes up all the time.
Yeah, anyways, I don't know, what's our comment on that, Mr. Chairman? I guess it's, Jerry's our leader, you know, Jerry's, I mean, I'm good with Jerry.
Yeah, see enough, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I mean, I, I, I mean, he's gonna have trucks in there delivering product and everything, you know, maybe parked there for a period of time, but not overnight, so it may be the overnight thing is something you would live by.
Oh, the letter is here, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, so he said, Jerry says, in the cease and desist letter, you're in violation of the town zoning bylaws two hundred and thirty-nine, which is highway business. No use classification is listed in the NIA ACS permitted in the highway business district, which is not listed in subsection D O E, so because it's not listed.
Not listed, I get it, yeah, yeah, and that, and that makes it pretty clear that by listing the stuff, this is what you can do.
Right.
If it's not on the list, you can't do it.
Has anybody seen the post office building next to the Walmart parking lot? Don't they have like three hundred violations there?
Well, there's, I think, I said, because it's a federal news, I think they might be.
Okay, I thought, go, go there, I was in front of a Redding lumber, and I stopped, and one of the mail trucks, I come up behind it, and it had no license plate, nothing on it, and I pull up next to the wood, no inspection sticker.
Oh.
Driving around.
It's a bed, man, it's all right.
Oh, wow, I don't think that's a lot.
I don't think it's a lot.
Well, you know, they can kind of, you know, kind of, Uncle Sam, you know.
Did I do that?
You're going to jail.
Yeah.
With the.
You get to, you get to call them right away. But, but, yeah, I, it just, that particular point, I was just shaking my head. Big hole with a license plate, no license plate, no inspection stickers, he's driving around the room.
The best is how they take that corner on, on center, you know, like, that's our conquer. When they, they come at you, they're going full speed, but they're such good drivers, only with wheel, you're just sitting there like, you're playing a little Mini Cooper, and then it goes, oof, right, you're just waiting to get over now, or.
I don't know.
I've been out there now.
I mean, I'm assuming that the, that, if the building inspector is true, says it's true, but I'm not sure. I mean, if the parking lot was full of cars, would it be okay, because they're patrons?
I mean, I think so, you know.
Here's, here's my one thing I would notice, because the lot is so big, if they just put them at the other side, it seems like no one would even see them or care, but they're so forward, right up on the park, you know, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Very willing to store them too.
Yeah, I mean, I see Jerry's.
And what I'm just saying is, like, there's a lot of room on the other side.
I think Jerry's trying to do the right thing, you know.
I agree, you always, you know.
So we're just gonna support the building inspector? Even though we don't know why?
What else, and the other one was a home business electrical pole, business, home occupation.
Well, I mean, they kind of know why, like, if everyone had an empty asphalt, just started subletting their parking lot for.
They are, you know, you can see this right behind you. Like, what more, and it's right behind you there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so. Well, sell Joe a fish, like, and that'd just be like a bunch of trucks parked out there, like, every day now, like.
Good point.
Well, you would buy them at Walmart, right?
I don't know, I don't. You can overnight park at Walmart, but if Walmart just sublet their parking lot and fill it up with a bunch of big wheels.
I don't think they get paid or anything, no, that's just a courtesy.
Yeah, that's the greatest.
They get paid and.
No, no, but, but maybe this property, I don't know, it's either their business, that they're parking trucks there, or someone's paying them to park their trucks there.
Yeah.
I'm saying, everybody answering that extra asphalt, if everyone just starts doing this, like, I mean, that's what Jerry's getting at here.
Well, that's, like, he had a clear East Coast tree service out of Redding lumber, because he keeps, I don't know, saying they go, let's say, have their trucks there.
Yeah.
So it, it looks like that these, these are all like rental enterprise vehicles, so, I mean, is that a particular piece of property?
Well, the question is.
Zoned to do, can you zone, can you zone to do that?
Side hustle, I think, I think, no, that's what I assume it is, it's a side hustle, like, he's getting, that was, damn, five hundred bucks a week to park their trucks there. I don't know, but.
And Jerry was well, I don't know, but David, you know, so, yeah, so the one nine one North Street Home Occupation, basically just by law.
Okay.
Yep.
Because he's not gonna bring some of these electrical work on their household, you know?
That would take an amazing.
Yeah.
A lot of wire.
If he's that good, you know? Anyway, yeah, so, so just a, just a dialogue, you know, could also buy a lot, that's all.
So, on agenda, wasn't the Walmart fires on there?
It was on there, but actually, they are putting together additional information, I thought they'd be coming.
Which, which place was it, is that address just the address for the Apple lot?
The address.
So who is the applicant?
So Walmart is looking at doing some facade and signage updates, and so they're.
They're gonna change, redesign that.
Yeah, Chris Hayden, and you did that, didn't you?
Yeah, that one, that Romeo.
This is Romeo, she has our net long.
Yeah, he's really good at that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're probably gonna be coming in, I think the last time they did it, we handled it as a minor modification, but I'll share the plan with you, and if you feel it needs to be a public hearing, but I think it's really just signage and facade to update what they had for.
Yeah, that's all it is, is what, what we're doing towards the trial program, and, you know.
If you're.
Unless they're doing something with each of this.
No, I like, I like what, it gets back to, and while we're still discussing it, I think it's, it makes sense with the first applicant on Main Street, that, and I'm interested in everyone else's, because I was trying to put together kind of some goals, at least mine, to share with Warren, and then, you know, they need to be everybody's, but like, that was, and I've mentioned it, Danielle, before, and Danielle's kind of shepherded me, like, oh, we got this one, we got that one, but on Main Street, you know, I'd like to get more specific about the aesthetics, so that we have some.
Look up, I don't remember where.
The, the four districts?
The four districts, yeah.
Yeah, we have it, and we do ask people to comply when they come in for a site interview, but if they're not here for a full site interview, it's really hard to get them to redo their stuff.
But is it, is it still that, kind of like, even just with this, with the open space one, there's some, and you did a really good job of summarizing the things that we need to look at and can look at, and a lot of it, though, is, it is aesthetic in a way, but it's very still general, like, I mean, some of it gets specific, like, you know, articulate this, the buildings when they're longer than sixty feet, and all, yeah, it gets all that kind of stuff. Now, that's good, but I almost, like, it almost would help us with the applicant tonight, as well as Walmart, where you can say, you know what, this is the aesthetic we're kind of looking to do. Now, in order to get there, is that a study that's already been done?
Yeah.
You know, and we reference that, and then say, here's the images, this is what we're going for.
I think the original site interview did follow, and that's why even about certain design elements. I think the original site interview did follow, um, and that's why you have certain design elements, now we could pitch groups or use the profession of it, um, the, the four districts, so there was a study that was done by a consultant to get a better aesthetic on Main Street, I wanna say, what, the nineties, probably?
So it's been a while.
And so as a result of that.
Well, I mean, the, the aesthetic might be very different of what's kind of looks good, uh, thirty years later. Just a guess.
More.
Exactly.
More nickel, yeah.
The consultant, those, because the consultant recommendations was that there were these four districts, um.
Yeah, it was an attempt, it was an attempt to, to try to, to try to, uh, you know, create a, a, a particular look that was, that, that matched Nolan Redding, and, uh, one, one here, one here, one here, and one there, so that, so that you, when you go by, you say, oh, this is nice, oh, this is nice, so it's, it would be.
Cause it's not to try to like, just press down, especially on an operator like this, and I don't, I.
No, we didn't make it like that.
Right, well, I'm not saying what, I'm just saying like, the operator is clearly, I think, leasing the building probably, you know, she owns the building, you got it, so they own the building, but you're little by little, if we don't kind of put the heels in a little bit and say, we really want you to look like, you know, cause you're having to come to us, okay, you're, now you're, you know, you're in our site, so you have to try to do this, and it's, it's for the better good of the whole street, we're not, it's not just us trying to tell you, you know, but it's like, you're, you, you wanna do something, and we're telling you what we want it to look like, and when we say we, the town is telling you what it wants.
Have you ever seen a purple Kia Soul?
A while.
Yeah, the car?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, they'll buy any color, so, people taste are different, so.
Oh, yeah.
But, but an attempt, so, so that's fine, they can do that, but.
I mean, that's why they're.
Attempt to stabilize condo.
While, you know.
Look, look good, you know, to make the, to, to give us a, uh, some, some semblance of flow, you know, that was the idea behind those, those four things that we put together. So we're pretty, because we maybe present them out there, but really reasonable.
What's, what's interesting about it, and, and sometimes a little chickies know how to apply it, because what was done was the recommendations for design guidelines were never worked into the zoning, they were put into those site plan review regulations, which is sort of a different, I, you know, very.
You want to hammer it down, you know?
Yeah, but don't you think so a little bit, but don't you think we, and I'm asking that to everybody here, but don't you think we need to start doing that, because there, there's a lot of old tired buildings along twenty-eight right now, um, and there's.
A lot of pushback, okay?
But, let, let me just finish, Mr. Chairman, and I agree, but there, there's a lot turning over, and so you're getting this opportunity for the next person, very soon, on a lot of these, to say, I, I'd like it to look like this, and when I say I, you know, we, town, would like it to look like this, cause we're trying to like, build something bigger than just your business, it's, we're trying to create a field on the street.
Yeah.
Now, that's awesome, like, I like the other year, I was trying to move the buildings closer to, like, put the parking in the back, move everything in a little bit, few of the sidewalks, you know?
You know, Kate, there's a lot of towns out there that are really, really odd, but, I mean, they, they won't even let Duncan Dollars have anything but a brown building with the word Duncan Dollars on it.
Yeah, but it looks cool with the shingles, they make it look.
They got a.
Cotty, and they're.
Purple.
Cold, golden light.
That looks.
It's on, it's on, it's on, it's pretty, and everyone still goes there, like, that does not stop.
Yeah, that we know.
Yeah.
There's a, you know, you know.
That's still very fun, they still need some, the only thing everyone knows is chicken donuts, they don't need the.
Don't have to put these orange buildings.
Yeah.
I said one thing on the, on Walmart's side, like, I don't know if this is applicable, but I think it's helpful if there's a reason to get them in here to review that, because I think it is our opportunity to say.
Yes, and I've seen nicer looking Walmarts that we could be.
Well, wait.
I was just saying, but also like.
Then it owns that whole lot, right?
Yeah, yeah.
RK Centers, and like, between the Joe Fish entry there, which doesn't align.
Oh, it's massive, awful.
The whole, the whole parking lot flow there, like, is that a parking lot that's always empty, like?
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think that this board could be more proactive and talk to like, an owner like that, and be like, hey, you thought about maybe like, an old building up front there, like, when you thought about, I don't know, further development your site in a way that.
I agree, the way.
One could be your.
In word recite.
Yeah.
Word to your development there, if you took that nothing plaza and, and look at it now, it's awesome, it's amazing, and they, all they, they use the same real estate they had, it's not like they created new land. The one in.
It's, it's, it's used to the Uber Ball.
Yeah, it's just the Uber Ball, and it got so tired, no one's going there, and you know, it was empty.
But you have a great, a great access up Main Street there, the restaurant already.
They compress the, you know, it's all like, now, like, little, like, streets and Main Street, it's like, in, in Walmart, that plaza, they had a plan to do it, you know? They made it like some.
It would literally park twenty-eight at Old Lindfield.
So, yeah, they're trying to get.
Going, and making that, that type of atmosphere where it's smaller streets in between, and you have shops and stores all the way around.
They have the lights going across, it's, they, it's fantastic, you would have never thought of some, why, in that, that plaza, just like, five, six years ago, like, wow, this place is tired.
Well, they first started with just a couple of old buildings.
Yeah, you're right, it's this, you're right.
It was ridiculous.
Yeah.
Then when some of the master plan came.
Yeah, the master plan.
That's a place to go, in all its essence.
And if you go, market bounce, it's, it's, yeah, it's great.
That Walmart lot, none of that.
Is working.
Going on?
Yeah.
Not gonna work well. It's kind of junky.
Oh, it's just junky.
Right, yeah, so, you know, I don't know, I just think that like, if the board was telling a, a developer owner like that, I mean, just more owner, but putting it in their ear, that would be open. It's all part of a property management company, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Walmart doesn't really.
Well, they have, it's still like, it's vanished to make money, so.
But Walmart doesn't, Walmart can ask the property management company if it's okay to do this, but.
No, I wasn't talking about talking to Walmart, I was talking about talking to the owner of the, of the plaza.
Yeah, that's property management.
Yeah, Danielle, do we know who it is, the property management company?
They named it on the side.
They tell Walmart though, right, if Walmart doesn't own it.
RK Centers.
RK Centers, that's.
Basketball.
Are they, you know them?
I don't know them.
Okay.
I'm sure they like to make money.
Like, I would, I would think so.
I actually know that, I actually know that company, RK Centers, and, uh, they are frugal, to say the very least, so, they, they, uh, they've, yeah, I, one of their, uh, former attorneys is a close friend of mine, so I, I know the owner, and they're a very frugal group, so they wouldn't do anything they didn't have to do, let's just say that.
Yeah, they own a main money.
That's how, um.
It's a print money, they'll be on the end of that.
Yeah.
Warren, with different property management before them, they didn't want to do anything either, you were trying to get them to do a gazebo outside.
Oh, and they do no one.
Like, smile on that, I figured it was setting.
We wanted, we wanted exactly, we wanted something on front to give it some kind of appeal, and they put that super little thing on, and they were like, maybe they can find a grab. It's something you just, you just, on some of the shows you'll see, you'll notice something like that and say, hey, you got a ton of excess parking, this could be subdivision.
Can we have drag racing on Sunday?
No, I'm saying, I think we're gonna raise money, you know, off the market, eight acres up front for, for subdivision, like, would we agreeable to that, that? I don't know, I, I just think there's ways to.
I know, it's a big, big lot, big opportunity.
Needlessly.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a way to, to entice them to wanna.
Yeah.
You know, make money and reduce their overhead, right, like, to plow in a mass of blood, you know, I mean.
Well, when we bring them in, let's have like, a presentation of what we were gonna develop, and let's like, market street, just say.
Thank you.
Like, they're ripping down the old carryout.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly what the planning board there did.
Yeah.
They, they spent years soliciting developers to redevelop and reutilize.
So they're gonna do that, a similar kind of thing?
Yeah, they're putting a hotel, a restaurant.
Yeah, they've got.
Page one is a big hotel.
Yeah, they built the mosque out years ago, so everyone still pulls off on Route One, like, looking for something.
And it's tired, you know?
Kittery.
Oh, the Kittery.
Yeah, right off ninety-five.
Yeah, the planning board, even like, race highway system right there, they're going in a double lane, they're in accidents.
Yeah.
The old.
Right, it's right off.
Well, they go over to town, a restaurant.
Could be better.
Oh, wow.
Multiple phases to like, convert into like, a more like.
Yeah.
Hard fiber fixed use.
Yeah. It is, yeah, once you go there a few times, you kind of like it.
It's kind of stay, right?
I've seen it all.
Like, even on Walmart, you're like, I love the gazebo, but.
I've gone to fast pro shop to buy a boat here all that.
Well, that was a good, that was instructive. Hearing today, so.
Yeah, I think we did, we, we.
I'm so sorry, but before we move on from Walmart, um, do we wanna tell them, like, minor modifications, would they come in with facade and?
Let's, let's just tell them.
I'm wearing my beret that day, that's.
Yeah, what's that?
Just say, we're all gonna be wearing berets.
Why don't we just.
Green, orange colored one.
Get them to give us something, some kind of an idea what they want to do in the middle of the.
Like, you with a little smoke, it's there. I'm not that picky, but I am wearing my beret and a stick cigarette. All right, we're off then.
Oh, I'm just have one super quick update, um, wanted to just mention, again, I can't beat you, but March fourth, it's gonna be the CPC budget hearing for anyone who's intent, I will be presenting next year's budget. Um, and while we're there, um, I was also gonna take the opportunity to present the, um, draft RFP for seven Saint Teresa.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing was, I was just gonna give a super quick update at the request of the town administrator, um, for where we are with three A. What, um, I did recently, the other day, receive a letter back from the state with feedback on, um, the compliance model response that we sent them as a test review. Um, overall, it's good, I do have to clarify, they want us to, um.
With the, um.
With the floodplain area, um, I'm gonna clarify exactly what they need us to do, and I'll just, you know, revise the numbers, I'll let you know if there would be any change on the result of that, but it seems to me that we are pretty well on the right track.
So the, the original lots that we identified, they want us to like, increase the area and put in floodplain?
Yes, so what they want us to do is, um, because floodplain areas, as they do in most towns, um, require special permit for development, they wanna be sure that we are fully excluding that and not counting that as.
Excluding it.
They exclude it so that we don't, so that, so that by right means by right.
Yeah, so that, so they don't want people developing in the floodplain, and they don't want us counting that as areas, because realistically.
They just don't want that condition in there, so by right means by right.
Right, so I just have to make sure that the way that they have asked us to do the formula, I thought they'd have done already included that, I just have to clarify that, um, um, so if we do need to change something, I expected that it would be very, very minor, but I will discuss that with them and see what we need to do.
But, so you, did you include more money for economic development committee? I think we have, yeah, we're right here.
I was gonna say, um, so for economic development committee, I think we had said the request would be turned out from this year.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, that was the only real change to the budget of this year.
Okay.
Um, and then there was one other thing, but I think I wanted to mention, it wasn't.
Got a warrant salary.
Yes, I'm sure it's, I'll say, actually, all, double salary for all of you.
All right.
So I think that, um, I'll just send you the number, oh, uh, we're the first, um, budget hearing, so I'm assuming seven thirty, and I'll send out the actual terms. So, and I can accept it.
How do you think it went? It seemed like we didn't have any issues, and there was a lot of people on Zoom tonight, so, did you, so, it just seemed like you were able to do your triple duty again, and you went presenting, and, right?
I was, I was running around, gave it a bit, um, but yeah, no, I think it was fine, and I think I got everyone who was trying to come in and make sure I was admitting people, um, the, like, sharing of what's in the share file seems to actually work out, and I don't recall that I've been able to make that work before, so.
Because of just date, you know, access wireless, or just?
No, because, um, I'm, I'm hesitant to minimize my screen.
Right, right.
I don't wanna cut off what other people can see.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I noticed didn't happen, um, I had said it previously, before the meeting started, so that, um, every, so everyone didn't come in muted, which was correct, but I had said I wanted to be the only one who unmuted people, and that was definitely not the case, so I'll talk about it.
So people couldn't still.
They were unmuted themselves, now, as soon as people.
I'm sure that's a setting, right, it's gotta be.
I use them all, it's totally going.
Yes. Are we done?
Yeah, we're done, thank you.
All right.
Good night, everyone.